Please. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, and I welcome everyone to this, the fourth day of Public Hearing 25 of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. This public hearing, as I'm sure people following the hearing know, it is concerned with the NDIS and First Nations people in remote and very remote communities. Before I ask Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country, I need to make this statement. Due to reasons that are quite beyond the Royal Commission's control, we will not be able to provide a live Auslan interpretation of days four and five of the hearing on our webcast. Live captioning of the hearing will continue to be available, and an Auslan interpretation of days four and five will be added to the video of those days and will be available on the Royal Commission's website as soon as possible. The Royal Commission apologises for any inconvenience that this may cause to those following the hearing on the webcast, but unfortunately, this has been completely beyond the Royal Commission's control. I should now invite Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair.
Wordo. We acknowledge the Arundha people as the original inhabitants and traditional owners of the lands on which we gather today, Mowbatua, also known as Ella Springs. We acknowledge their ongoing spiritual and cultural connection to Mowbatua. We acknowledge and pay our deep respects to elders past and present. We extend that respect to all First Nations people, acknowledge their enduring connection to land, sky, seas and waters. Finally, we pay our deep respect to First Nations people here today and who are following this public hearing online on the mainland and on islands, including in the Torres Strait, especially elders, parents, young people and children, so well to Jura with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Mr.
Thank you, Chair. As far as the programme is for today, we'll first hear from a lived experience witness, Paulette, and that will be followed by a number of witnesses who are First Nations people from community-controlled organisations. Lastly, we'll hear from the NDIA. So our next witness is Paulette, and unfortunately, she can't be here with us today. Instead, I will read her statement after watching a short video of her, which was produced by the ABC. Paulette has given a statement for this public hearing dated the 11th of May this year, and her statement can be found at Hearing Bundle A, Tab 14. Operator, can you please display the video doc ID, abc.9999.01.01?
It's been a few months since Paulette Bumada moved away from her family in the remote community of Gumbalanya to Darwin, but she's already feeling homesick.
It's really hard for me to stay without my family.
For Paulette, it was a necessary move. She suffers from Mercado-Joseph disease, a rare degenerative condition. In Darwin, she's able to access a range of supports under her NDIS plan that weren't available in Gumbalanya, including specialist disability accommodation and multiple physiotherapy sessions a week.
The carers from Darwin helped me come to my place, my house, and to clean my house and to wash me and to wash my clothes and to watch everything.
There are more than 1,700 NDIS participants living in remote parts of the Northern Territory, but many, like Paulette, struggle to access adequate care.
Operator, can you please also display the map of the top end? So Commissioners, as you'll see, Gumbalanya sits between Darwin and Nellimboy. And just to provide more context into where Paulette will be speaking from. My name is Paulette, and I'm 52 years old. I'm originally from Groot Island, but I was adopted when I was a baby in Darwin by my parents who lived in Gumbalanya. They are Majaring Gunch, and the main language around Gumbalanya is Kumujuk. I have a sister who was also adopted. I speak Kumukuj and English. I also understand a little bit of Groot language, Anindiloyoka. I know a few families from Groot, but I don't have my mum and dad there anymore. They've passed away. I completed primary school in Gumbalanya and two years of secondary schooling. After school, I worked in a number of different jobs, including as a receptionist, cleaner and teacher's aide. I worked until about 2008, when I had my youngest kid. I have four children. My first husband is from Gumbalanya, and he is the father of my two oldest sons, who are 34 and 37. My second husband, also from Gumbalanya, is the father of my third son, who is 14, and my daughter, who is 23. Three of my children live in Ompele. I started to get sick with Mercado-Joseph disease, MJD, about 10 years ago. My father from Groot Island had MJD and passed away. My brother, younger sister and niece also have MJD. My younger sister can hardly walk. They all live on Groot. Because of MJD, I need help to do things like washing and mopping the floor. I get really tired. I started using a wheelchair a year or two ago. When I was in community, I used an electric scooter. I would use it to go to the clinic, post office or the supermarket. I don't feel sick very often. There is a medical clinic I can go to in Gumbalanya. Recently, I had to go to hospital in Darwin due to a boil on my leg and a sore bladder. In February, in February 2022, I also went to the hospital due to liver problems. They gave me medicine, and I'm feeling a lot better. When I'm back home, I like to go fishing with other people in my community. Sometimes I feel like they don't want me to go with them. Maybe it's because they think they will have to look after me or don't know how to help me. Being on country makes me feel happy, quiet and peaceful. I like fishing and looking for turtles. There are a few bush medicines out at Gumbalanya. There are also some majikbul, traditional healers in Gumbalanya. I like to see them when I feel unwell. Sometimes this is better than going to the doctor. When I'm home, my family helps me wash my clothes, have a shower, cook my meals and make my bed. For a long time, we had no washing machine at home, but we do now. I didn't get any help or services before the NDIS, only my family would help me. It would be easier for them to help me if they got paid. Sometimes, if my scooter breaks down, a man is called to come and fix it. It often takes a long time for the scooter to get fixed. I have to stay home and do nothing. I tell my daughter or husband to go and get my mail or go to the shops for me. It's not good when I can't use my scooter. Sometimes I have to help, I have to get help from aged care services. There are no services for people with disability in Gumbalanya, only aged care services. I have heard of the NDIS. It means that people are meant to come in from Darwin to help me. Sometimes, they can't get in because the road is closed during the wet season. Before I moved to Darwin, the therapists would come and help me do exercises at my home because it has rails. They didn't come very often. I talk to a NDIS planner sometimes. Not very often. She talks about goals. She talks to me on the phone, and sometimes it's hard to understand her. She helped to fix my scooter, and that's about it. She lives in Darwin. Nine people live in my house back home. It's a four-bedroom house with two bathrooms, one inside and one outside. I love being with my family. The Mercado-Joseph Disease Foundation organised for people to come to my house to put in rails and ramps a few years ago. Last year, a woman from the MJDF suggested I should move to Darwin. She said it would be better to be in Darwin for the NDIS, and I could get more services. I needed more help at home with mopping and washing. I couldn't get enough help with this in Gumbalanya. She said my family could come and visit, and that my 14-year-old son could stay with me in Darwin. She's, she said he could stay all the time, but he wanted to stay on country in Gumbalanya. I didn't understand it would be like this. I didn't realise that my family couldn't come and stay with me. I put my name on a piece of paper because I thought my family could come visit more. I've been here since August last year. I am here by myself in Darwin without my kids. My son has come to visit once. It is very hard for me. I think I'm going to move back home. I don't want to stay in Darwin anymore. The people here want me to stay, but I don't want to because I miss my family. It makes me want to cry when I think of my family. I feel so sad being away from my family and country. I know they miss me too. I want the rest of my family to come and stay with me, but they can't. They are not allowed to stay with me. I have a house here, but it's an NDIS house, so they aren't allowed to stay. My husband stayed with me for a while over Christmas, but he's not allowed to stay now. He has to sleep in the long grass if he comes to Darwin. I have missed out on ceremony while I'm in Darwin. I particularly miss all the regular things I do each day, like spending time with my family, walking around town with them and speaking Kumukuj. Speaking language is important to me. Sometimes it's a bit difficult to understand English. When I wake up at the house in Darwin, the support workers help me get breakfast. Some days, they just want me to stay home, and other days, I have community access. My community access involves either going to the bank or shopping. It's very boring. Sometimes I go to the MJDF office to chat with the staff. I don't do any fishing or hunting. A physio comes once per week, and I do a few exercises like standing up and sitting down. I also practise my walking. I used a walker before I started using my wheelchair. I don't think there are any support workers in my community. No one else apart from my family helps me with things. My daughter used to get a carer's pension, but now it has stopped. My daughter stopped working to look after me. It is important in our culture that women looked after other women. If I was the boss, I would make the NDIS come to my community to help me with cleaning and cooking in my home. I would also want them to help me go hunting for a turtle, goose, pig or buffalo and help me go fishing. I miss the bush foods, and I need someone to help me cook the bush foods. I would like the doctor to come and see me to make sure I'm healthy. I would like the therapist to come and do my exercises with me at home. Commissioners, that's the evidence for Paulette. I'll now hand over to Ms McMahon, who will take the next witness.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms McMahon.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, June Reema is here in the hearing room, and Mr Damian Griffiths is connecting via ABL.
Good morning. Have we got Mr Griffiths on screen? Not yet. I've heard your name pronounced variously, Reima and Reema, which is correct.
Reema.
Reema. Thank you.
Perhaps while Mr Griffiths is coming on, I'll just let the Royal Commission know that you'll now hear from June Reema, the Deputy CEO of the First Peoples Disability Network, and also Damian Griffiths, the CEO of that organisation. If I could just point out, Chair and Commissioners...
I think Mr Griffiths has now magically appeared on screen. Good morning, Mr Griffiths. Can you hear us? They're not. I think we'll just give it a minute to see whether we can connect with Mr Griffiths. Can our IT people tell us whether connection is being made?
Chair, would you like just to take a couple of minutes break too?
Yes, I think we should establish the connection. I'm sorry, Ms Reema, to interrupt in this way, but let's take a couple of minutes just to make sure that we can contact Mr Griffiths. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, Mr Griffiths. Sorry for the delay, but we had a difficulty in establishing the connection with you, as I'm sure you know, Ms Reema is in the Ella Springs Hearing Room with us. Just to be clear, Commissioner Mason is with me, and the hearing room is on my left. Commissioner McEwan is on my right, and Ms McMahon, who will ask you some questions in due course, is also in the Ella Springs Hearing Room. Thank you both for the statement that you have provided, and of course, for all of the assistance that each of you has provided to the Royal Commission. We very much appreciate the contributions that each of you has made to our work. It has been very important. I will ask you, if you don't mind, to follow the instructions of my associate, who is in the hearing room, who will administer the oath or affirmation, as the case may be, first, I think, with Ms Reema, and then with Mr Griffiths.
I'd indicate, Chair, that June will take an oath and Damian...
Yes, I understand that, and I think my associate to wear a bit. Thank you.
Ms Reema, I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms Reema.
Mr Griffiths, I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr Griffiths. I'll now ask Ms McMahon to ask you some questions, that is, each of you, some questions.
Thank you, Chair. June and Damian, you've provided a joint statement to the Royal Commission dated the 23rd of June 2022. Damian, just firstly, you have not signed that statement, but it's the case, isn't it, that you're involved in the preparation of that statement and have reviewed it?
Yes, absolutely.
And is it the case that the contents of that statement are true and correct?
Yes, they are.
And June, may I ask you, are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
FPDN have also provided a submission to the Royal Commission, the Promoting Inclusion Issues Paper. May I just ask if those submissions continue to represent FPDN's position?
Correct.
Yes, they do.
June, the Royal Commission are aware of FPDN's work from your previous evidence at the hearings, but for the wider audience, could you please explain who you represent and the work of FPDN?
Yes, I would. I'd like to begin first and foremost acknowledging that we're on country here today, but also I'd like to acknowledge our founding member, Uncle Lester Bostock, a Bundjalong man, who, you know, was at the forefront of the disability rights movement, but understood that there wasn't a movement for First Nations people. So he was the founding member, as we said, for First Peoples Disability Network, but also our past chairperson, Ani Gail Rankin and Emma Dierewoman. So they were great warriors and mentors to FPDN, and I'd like to acknowledge them here today. But in regards to FPDN's work, so we're a national systemic peak, representing the voices and the narrative of First Nations people living with disability, their families and carers. For most of our work, it is policy, but we also, you know, collate the narrative and do some research in regards to making a better outcomes for our First Nations people living with disability across this country and work closely with NGOs and the government sector.
And you represent people in remote and very remote areas as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Damian, FPDN has set out a 10-point plan for the implementation of the NDIS in Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities. Why did FPDN develop the 10-point plan?
Just, I'd also just like to acknowledge the traditional owners on whose land the hearing is being held today, and acknowledge the Arundha people as the traditional owners of the land there in Ella Springs, and also, as Juney said, acknowledge two of our founding elders, Uncle Lester Bostock and Ani Gail Rankin. We developed a 10-point plan for the successful implementation of the NDIS in First Nations communities because we sadly anticipated that the establishment of the scheme was likely to not have sufficient focus on the needs of First Nations people with disability. So we decided back in 2013, when the scheme was first established, to clearly articulate 10 priority actions based upon some 15, 20 years of community consultation. Those 10 points were about giving a clear direction to the agency and to the scheme for how it could better support or most, support most First Nations people with disability, particularly those living in regional remote Australia.
Thank you. And June, may I just confirm, those 10 points, and it's included in your issues paper and your statement, are they applicable to First Nations people in remote and very remote communities as well?
Yes, definitely today, more so than ever.
Now, in your submission, it also states that the 10 priorities in the plan should be developed using three pillars, and Commissioners, this is at paragraph 22 of the statement, and I might just read those out for the wider audience. They are firstly, building the capacity of communities and individuals to understand their rights and entitlements. Secondly, to invest to create a First Peoples Community Controlled Service Sector. And thirdly, to develop and support a First Nations workforce. Now, I just want to explore some of those priorities and foundations now. Damian, the first point in your plan is to invest and create an Aboriginal community-controlled disability service sector to provide disability supports by Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people with disability for their communities. Can you please explain to the Commissioners what that sector would look like?
Well firstly, it'd be community-owned and community-led, and owned by First Nations people and their communities. So it wouldn't be an external service system per se, which is the historical way that disability services have been provided to First Nations communities, if provided at all. The idea also is that communities themselves generate or create their own workforce, which in many communities already exists, but perhaps in informal way, and formalising that so that community members can be the ones providing support to their own community members with disability.
And you've read, I understand, the evidence in this hearing from NPY, WC and also Manon. Are they examples of the sort of models that you speak of, or that you recommend?
Yes, they are examples, and the NPY Women's Council in particular has the oldest First Nations-owned and operated disability service system in the country, and it dates back to the 1990s. And the experience that they bring is invaluable, and it has potential for transference, if you like, for want of a better term, into other regional remote communities around the country. And same for the work that's been done in the Kimberley region, particularly around fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. That approach to disability service provision, provision around that particular type of disability is also of great relevance, and we would see both of those organisations as models for service delivery that need to be rolled out across regional remote Australia.
Thank you. And Damian, in relation to the 10-point plan, has this been communicated, that is, your plan to the NDIA?
Yes, it has, and it was communicated as far back as 2013. It's a source of great frustration to us that we have not, really only experienced, in our view, and not just in our view, amongst the wider First Nations leadership, a tokenistic approach to the needs of First Nations people with disability by the National Disability Insurance Agency. It's not sufficient to write a strategy document based upon a two- or three-hour meeting. What needs to happen is a genuine power-sharing co-design approach between experts from the First Nations communities and from community members in partnership with the National Disability Insurance Agency that clearly articulates what we want to achieve and the outcomes we're seeking for First Nations people in regional remote Australia. We would, we would also say that if you were to judge a society by how the most vulnerable are supported, we would argue, argue with the First Peoples Disability Network that as a nation, we're failing miserably because we aren't providing meaningful support and opportunity to some of Australia's most vulnerable people, namely First Nations people with disability, particularly our people living in regional remote Australia. So there's a very long way to go. We are ready, and we've been very, very patient, but it's long past time. We need a substantive Standing Committee approach that is about equal power sharing and genuine co-design. There has been some shift in the last six months by the agency, and we welcome that, but that work needs to progress, well, it should have progressed close to a decade ago now, to be frank. Thank you.
I'll come back to the Standing Committee issue that you've raised in due course, but in terms of having shared the 10-point plan with the NDIA, what if any... what if any, what has there been a response in relation to the recommendations in that plan, including the creation of an Aboriginal Community Controlled Disability Service Sector?
Nothing of any substance, we would argue. One of the frustrations we've faced at the First Peoples' Disability Network, we've probably had perhaps 10 different contract managers over the life of the National Disability Insurance Scheme. And that to us suggests a lack of prioritizing, a lack of recognition on the part of the NDIA that to make meaningful change in the lives of First Nations people with disability across the country, and in particular those First Nations people living in regional remote Australia, requires deep thinking, requires a strong strategic approach, and a strong policy approach. We haven't never seen any real evidence of that approach being ever really undertaken in any meaningful way. So we're prepared to start that process now, as long as it's done in a genuine co-design, genuine power sharing, genuine learning, two-way learning approach.
Damian, you just mentioned having had, in your estimation, around 10 different contacts at the NDIA in the context of that question I asked about consultation. Can you just tell the commissioners firstly, how were you set up with the contact in the first place? And what was the purpose of that line of communication?
Well, it wasn't an approach that we were involved in. It was an approach that was sort of, we were told this is how it will be, if you like. One of our other frustrations is there really is a lack of First Nations people in any leadership roles within the agency. I'm happy to be proven wrong, but I believe that's still the case. And there should also be First Nations representation on the board of the the agency because we're not a fringe, small minority of potential participants in the scheme. We're actually a significant, a very significant cohort. So it always felt, if I could be this direct, it was perhaps more around contract management than meaningful engagement on the part of the agency. I appreciate the scheme has been very busy and very demanding to get off the ground. But why we weren't utilized as experts in this area still remains a mystery, to be honest.
June, I might turn to you now and ask you this question. From your observations and what you hear from the people that you represent, people with disability and their families, do First Nations people with disability and their families express a preference for First Nations community-controlled services? And if so, why?
Yes, they generally do. And we acknowledge that people have choice in their life, and for some family groups, that may not be the priority, but generally they prefer to, because they're known and proven in community, to generally work with community. So, you know, First Nations people with disability in community understand, you know, their local services in regards to acknowledging, you know, their local languages, their local culture, and other, you know, cultural implications around that. They also acknowledge when out in community, people understand the flexibility or other priorities might happen in community. So when it's place-based in community, they know what business is happening on behalf of those families or the wider community. So it has to be in community to support community because they understand how that community works, all those individual families and those associations.
And when you speak of other priorities, you mentioned business, you're talking about cultural priorities there, aren't you?
Correct, yeah, which is first and foremost for, you know, our communities, our families, and our people with disability.
Now, in the context of developing a First Nations Community Controlled Service Sector, FPDN advocates for a whole-of-community approach. Can you please assist the commissioners to understand what that means from your perspective?
Yes, so FPDN, you know, has talked about this whole-of-community approach for more than 10 years now. And the concept comes from developing countries where there isn't a service system or where there isn't a welfare system to support communities. And what the the concept is, is about going into those individual, individual communities with permission of elders and other people, and language interpreters or families, and mapping that community. What is already in the community? What can be developed? What are these skill sets already there? How can further skill sets be developed? What needs to be done to sustain that community for individuals to stay and live on country and be backed by, you know, appropriate block funding or other funding mechanisms to support people to stay on country?
So you're talking there about local solutions based on unique strengths and unique challenges?
Correct, you know, and we have to look at different ways of doing business, you know, out in our communities, particularly for, you know, our very remote communities, as we've seen over the last few days. There isn't a service system. There isn't, you know, appropriate equipment, you know, supports or other mechanisms for people to stay on country and support their health and wellbeing, which is, you know, foremost for our First Nations people and those living with disability.
Thank you, June. Damian, I'm going to move on to the fourth point in your plan, and it is to recognize and value the existing knowledge, skills and expertise within Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities. What are some practical ways that this priority can be expressed as it relates to the operation of the NDIS?
Sure. Well, I think the first point to make is that First Nations communities, First Nations people are thought leaders on inclusion. So in fact, we need to flip it over the other way, if you like. We know that disability has always been part of the human experience in First Nations communities. We know that now because of a fairly recent archaeological discovery at Lake Mungo in New South Wales, where a single footprint, and the archaeologists believe also a stick, with a single footprint, and the analysis has said that it's a male person with one leg using a stick and perhaps even moving at significant speed. And the theory is that they are participating in a hunt. So that's a modification that was made to enable that community member to participate in community life. And that single footprint has been dated at 25,000 years ago. So there was always been accommodations for community members with disability. We know that many traditional healers, it's not unusual for traditional healers to be blind or vision impaired. And there's also growing evidence of existing sign languages. In many of our regional remote communities, they've been existence for a very long time. So in that sense, and the other evidence we have is that there's no comparable word for disability in traditional communities. So that's actually a wonderful thing. It suggests that, if you like, it's come as you are. And we will do what we can to provide the support so you can participate in community life. So we want to change the conversation from medical model of disability to social model of disability to a culture of inclusion. So we also believe that most Australians with disability want the same sort of approach. So it's a really important starting point to recognize the long history of supporting community members with disability that exist in our communities. And that in itself demonstrates that we are thought leaders and we have an innate sense of inclusion and that we have those principles in mind and that we want to share that story because it's a story that many Australians with disability would benefit from.
Damian, you mentioned a few moments ago, I think you used the word Standing Committee or perhaps Steering Committee. Is that an expression of this fourth point, that is, using the skills and expertise of First Nations people?
Yes, absolutely. So we've called for a Standing Committee, Steering Committee. I guess we want to use the term Standing Committee because we wanted to be, I wanted to have authority. Myself and June have been working in this area for a very long time and been on many, many steering committees and many committees of different description. But what we mean is a committee that has authority, a committee that is made up of First Nations people that have expertise in this area. In a similar structure to what the Royal Commission's been using, actually, in its First Nations Strategic Advisory Group, that is, that it's predominantly made up of First Nations people with disability themselves, but also other people like from Indigenous Allied Health Australia, from NACHO, the National Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Organizations, from other community organizations that have an interest and understanding of disability. But we don't just want it to be a steering committee that meets for a couple of hours and then something is signed off. And before you know it, you've agreed to a strategy that perhaps hasn't been addressed adequately. It needs to continue to function. It needs to have authority, and it needs to be done in a co-design way, which in in co-design, we mean by that equal power sharing, that is about both parties learning from one another so that we can create the future we want. But we've been calling that for that for a very long time. It's well past time. In in response to that, in the past, I've had responses from NDIA officials, which would be along the lines of, but if we do it for your community, we have to do it for everyone. Well, my response to that is so. What would be so bad about that? So I think that's well past time, and we're anxious for that to happen. Well, it should already be happening. Thank you.
And just if you could just perhaps briefly assist the commissioners to understand some examples of what the functions might be of such a committee?
Well, I think it would need to develop some substantive terms of reference. Obviously, it would be about the design of the scheme for its effectiveness in regional remote Australia, but not just regional remote Australia. It would need to include a focus on urban and large regional centres. It would also need to recognize that the market-driven approach is a bit of a nonsense, if I could be that frank, particularly in regional remote Australia, that we need a service system which is about responding to what communities need and want, and it's simple as that. That that is the way it should be done. So it may look different in some parts of the country. And that community themselves, as June outlined before, are the the leaders in terms of how a service system should be designed. It also should include expertise in the cost analysis side of things. That's not something that, that's perhaps something the agency could bring to the table. Our understanding of some of the barriers that many of our service providers face is a cost barrier. So we need to have an open and honest discussion about that also.
I will be coming to, oh, sorry, Damian.
There you go, that's fine.
I know, I was just going to indicate I will be coming on to a local workforce and cost shortly, but please continue.
No, that's fine. So it'd be terms of reference that's robust. I think the thing we're most anxious about is that it has authority.
Yes.
Because, yeah, we sit on plenty of committees, as I'm sure others do. And sometimes committees are established as a way of perhaps, well, how do I say this? Perhaps, you know, appeasing, I guess, but this is about actually doing substantive design that is based on an equal power-sharing relationship.
Thank you. I asked you some questions earlier about consultation, but just at paragraph 63 of your statement, you indicated that FPDN were not asked to be involved in the thin market trials. June, perhaps if I could move to you, was FPDN consulted in relation to the NDIA's 2017 Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Engagement Strategy?
Yes, we were. But as Damian said, there were, you know, only, my recollection, three meetings for that, and they are time-limited. So it's not really hearing the voice and really betting down, you know, what the the issues are and what it should look like in a cultural framework on behalf of First Nations people living with disability. So we were involved, but it wasn't really a meaningful engagement, I would say.
In that, were you involved personally in that engagement?
Correct, yeah.
But do you recall whether or not your 10-point plan and its and its cultural underpinnings were discussed in that context?
No.
Were you involved in the strategy's progress update in 2021?
No.
Were you consulted in relation to the NDIA's rural and remote strategy?
Yes, but again, there were six weekly meetings that I was asked to be a part of. But it kept changing the the concept and who were involved in those. So it was more about supporting NDIS staff on the ground. That's how I felt about it. I felt like I was giving, you know, cultural awareness and disability awareness strategy rather than developing a strategy.
And again, were you personally involved in those consultations?
Yes.
And was your 10-point plan and its underpinnings discussed in those meetings?
No.
Now, I want to move on now to speaking about barriers. June, I just want to clarify something from your state, or if you could please clarify from your statement. At paragraphs 45 to 50 refers to a number of barriers, but it's under the heading of specific barriers for people in the Torres Strait. Is it the case that the barriers in those paragraphs actually apply to remote and very remote areas generally?
Yes, and, you know, as we know, you know, different cultural groups have different, you know, individual barriers. But in respect to, you know, First Nations people and Torres Strait Islander people, the barriers are still there. Their voice hasn't been heard. We haven't understand, understood about, you know, two ways of doing business and collectively coming together and, you know, supporting those individuals in those regions to address the barriers.
And I'll talk about, oh, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, sorry. I was just going to say, one size does not fit all.
Thank you. Damian, FPDN note in their statement about a lack of investment in Torres Strait. Do you have any examples or what are you hearing, your organization hearing about the issues in relation to the operation of the NDIS in the Torres Strait?
Well, we just don't see much or if any evidence of any substantive activity in the Torres Strait. And a couple of our staff have made a number of visits to the Torres Strait, resourced our own, and back, if I might add, to try and better understand some of the often unique barriers that people in island communities face. Also, our board member, Mr. Seriako Trilogan, who's a Torres Strait Islander man, is a good example. He's, he has, he had to leave the islands at a very young age. He has significant disability and had to move to Cairns. And he doesn't have the same cultural connections that he would like to have because he can rarely travel back. We have to build a system that respects that people want and should have the right, or not should, actually have the right to live on country. So therefore, we need to design systems that make that, that enable that. And June's example before of the community-based rehabilitation approach that exists in many developing income-poor settings is the model that can be used. There is evidence around many parts of the income-poor countries of the world where people with disability are supported to stay within their own communities. And we're often talking about systems that have no infrastructure, no, if you like, safety net on the part of government, little or no infrastructure, but communities come up with the solutions themselves. So it's not like we're reinventing a wheel here. In many ways, there's been substantive thinking done on how to approach these things for a very long time. And the Standing Committee approach could provide that advice to the agency on how things could work. The other thing we'd argue is I think it's likely to be very, very cost-effective. I would assume, in fact, I'd be very confident that it would be more cost-effective if we want to get down to that, you know, uncomfortable reality, that it would be, I would be certain, more cost-effective to enable a person to stay on community. But also, the opportunity potentially to create micro economies is very, very real. You could, there could be a workforce that stays within community, and that in itself generates a little micro economy, for want a better term. There needs to be someone to drive the wheelchair accessible bus. There needs to be someone to learn how to provide personal care support. There needs to be someone to build and maintain, you know, footpaths so that wheelchair users can move around. All those things should be done within community itself. I think we're missing opportunities here all the time. And that thin market approach, if I may say so, that language troubles us a great deal. Thin markets to me, and I'm not a, I'm not a, not an economist or a business person, but logically to me, if you said a market was thin, it's hardly attractive to be active there, I would argue. but logically to me, if you said a market was thin, it's hardly attractive to be active there, I would argue, given it's been labelled as a thin market. So I think we have to change the language significantly and get rid of these terms of like market, particularly in relation to region remote communities.
Yes, I might just deviate for a moment since you've dealt with matters of costs and solutions, local solutions. F P D N suggests that high cost of delivering services could be reduced by employing and educating locally. Damian, I might just ask you to answer this question, then I'll move back to June for some barriers. But what would be required to do this?
So I think we've seen evidence before of some of the effective ways that things can be done. I'm reflecting upon a program that I was familiar with in the early two thousands, which was the Averaged On Mental Health Worker Program. I think that was the correct title. But it was a pretty simple model where local community members were given access to training to understand how to provide support to other community members, particularly if community members were really struggling with very significant mental health. It was about not waiting for an external system to fly in and fly out. It was about giving the skills to community members themselves. I'm not necessarily talking about long lists of TAFE diplomas though, to be honest. These are about on the, you know, community, two or three day training sessions so that community members can be the support for their own community members. We should be applying the same model as it relates to disability. There's no doubt there's a lack of, I think it'd be fair to say, there's a lack of knowledge of some particular disability-related needs in some of our communities, no question. Because often what happens is when families go to hospital perhaps and they may have a child who has significant disability, often the family's given a brochure and then sent home, if you like. What we need to do is invest in educating and informing community members so they can understand how to provide the best supports to their own community members with disabilities. If we invest in that, then we're creating a potential workforce. We're keeping people on country and in community. And that to me, I'm not an economist, but I'd love to see an analysis because I would have thought it's far more cost-effective than a fly-in-fly-out approach, which will only ever address needs in a very sporadic way. So you don't see, many First Nations people with disability in region remote Australia, don't, particularly young people, don't get to progress through their life like a young person with disability in an urban community because they don't get the consistency of the allied health support. So they can't go see a speech pathologist, for example, every two weeks. So what we need to do is get local community members to become the, I guess you'd call it informal, but I'm reluctant to use that word informal because I think it should be paid and I think it should be valued. And you get those local people to do those interim things, for want of a better term, while you wait for the expertise to come in, which could be offered by Indigenous Island Health professionals too, I might add. So we think.
And I'll come to that. I'll come to that shortly as well. But I just wanted to move on to barriers for a moment. And June, at paragraph twenty-nine seven of your statement, you indicate that labelling is problematic for First Nations people. Can you explain how labelling creates a barrier to access?
Yeah, so what we need to understand here, the European concept of labelling and diagnostic tools and, you know, for our communities just does not work. Because as we heard from Damian earlier, culturally in our communities, everyone is included. Other people may need, you know, extra supports in their life. But when we go to the, you know, European concept that, you know, you have this diagnostic tool to say that you have autism or cerebral palsy or whatever it means, it actually means nothing to our communities. And, you know, I've done, worked with many programs, particularly in rural and remote communities. And what we heard from our families, you know, that rather than labelling, is how they participate in community, how does culture affect, you know, them in their in their community and, you know, how they, you know, work together with other families and other individuals. So, you know, an typic example, when I went out with Autism Australia, you know, when we talked about, you know, what autism is in community, you know, most of the community members' families and mothers said, and we asked them, you know, what did you want for your children? And they all just said, we want them to be loved. They didn't talk about, you know, having an autistic labelling, but how can we support them to stay in community, support them with their education? But, you know, first and foremost, you know, they're a cultural person that is loved and acknowledged within their community as a First Nations person first, not a person, you know, living with a particular difference to participate.
How are you seeing though that the labelling is actually leading to difficulties accessing the N D I S?
Yes, so it's the lack of the education and knowledge. It means nothing to community, that diagnostic label. You know, they may understand a bit about hearing impairment or vision impairment or certain physical disabilities. But what I'm trying to say, you know, culturally, that person is a cultural person first.
Yes.
That disability label means nothing to them. So then when they go into a government system that says that boxes have to be ticked in about your impairment or what that labelling, culturally and language-wise, it doesn't translate. So, you know, people are not understand what they're being spoken to and being asked to complete, you know, forms in regards to a government system because they have a certain label. That is not who they are as a person. And that's why this system doesn't work for most language groups, you know, in our communities.
Ms. Reema, what would you replace it with? Bearing in mind that if you have any government program that involves the allocation of public resources, there will need to be some form of eligibility criteria for those who are to participate, whether on an individual or communal basis. So I understand what you're saying about labels, but is it not necessary somewhere for criteria to be part of any scheme?
I would argue against that because that's a colonial concept. You know, we're not, I understand where you're coming from. But for First Nations people, we are not about labelling.
Yeah, I understand.
So I know.
I'm looking, sorry, I'm looking at it from a different point of view. I understand that. But the problem we're faced with is a scheme that is currently in place. We've heard over this week the deficiencies of that scheme and many suggestions as to how it can be changed. But inevitably, one would have thought that whatever changes come about, there can't just be a scheme that has no boundaries. I mean, this may be.
I'm not saying.
An unpleasant practical aspect, but how do we deal with it?
But we need to talk to First Nations people, which hasn't been done. So the concept of the scheme originally was not about diagnostic. It was about how do you participate? How does, you know, how do you as a person with disability, how do you enjoy a life of good health and wellbeing? So those are the questions that we need to be asking, you know, in a cultural context. But as Damian has said, we need a steering committee to co-design because that will look different in every region, as we've previously heard. And that cultural and language navigation is different in every community. So yes, there are certain elements, I totally understand, to be, you know, enable, you know, participation. But it has to look different and we need to design that, that the voices and those impairments or those people living with differences are included within their language and cultural group. So how does it look for them? So, you know, it's about that, you know, interpretation of those languages, all those line items. How does that interpret in a particular language group or particular cultural group? And if we keep imposing colonial systems that have never worked for our communities, ever, you know, whether it's the education system, justice system, the N D I S system, we're not going to make change, as we previously heard, in all respect. We're just rolling out the same systems over and over again with no outcomes. And there is, you know, a saying around that, that definition.
The logic of your position, I'm saying it's wrong or can't be implemented, but the logic of your position seems to be that the support for communities locally, culturally appropriate, providing for a life that is full and rich and has the cultural attributes that are essential to wellbeing, shouldn't be structured by reference to disability at all.
Correct.
So that means that we carve this out from the National Disability Insurance Scheme on your approach and have a completely different system that seeks individual community wellbeing by entirely different processes.
And that's what F P D N have said from the beginning, it has to look different for First Nations people, which, you know, as Damian has said, that can look different for many other, you know, cultural groups also. You know, because we said this is what the scheme is.
No.
And it's not working, so do we need to look at other ways of doing business?
Well, can I?
And it's about two ways of doing business, your way and our way.
Okay.
And we need to come together.
Yes, I'm not, all right, well, leaving aside our way, yet your way. Does that mean that you see the N D I S as unfit for purpose for the communities we're talking about and incapable of remedy to achieve the results you want?
Yeah, and yeah, I would say yes.
All right, okay, I understand that. Mr. Griffiths, do you have a view about that?
Yeah, no, I think now we're a decade into the scheme and I think all the evidence that has appeared this week would show that it's failing. So I think the key questions here and the critical things to understand is any assessment, if you like, for want of a better term, to enable a First Nations person to get into the scheme, the questions need to be functional ones. So not necessarily, do you have cerebral palsy? Or it's more, do you have difficulty getting around your community, for example? Or do you have difficulty hearing perhaps? We also need to recognize that there are particular barriers, and I think the commission, I know the commission's heard about this throughout the week, to accessing, in accessing assessments anyway. So again, that's another example of the current system not being realistic in terms of being able to enable First Nations people to access it. So the cost barriers to an assessment, you know, that's been a common theme. So that's something that has to be understood. I think the other critical question which June was touching on, I think one of the frustrations we still face, Chair, is a lack of understanding of the context. So planners and L A Cs and local area coordinators and particularly planners, we're just not seeing any evidence that planners really know the degree of poverty that exists in region remote Australia, for example. So this is another reason why we're not seeing, well, the data is really poor in the Kimberley, as came up the other day. I think the petition patient rate, forgive me if I'm not quite getting this right, but it was a very low percentage in terms of people having plans done but not actioning them. The problem with that is the scheme counts them as a participant. But we would argue that's not a participant, that's just someone who's had a plan done. So what we need to understand is that to plan an outcome for a First Nations person with disability living in region remote Australia, we need to know that there are food security issues, as you would be aware, Chair, in many of our region remote communities, and getting worse. There are, I still think it's the case in Willcanna this week, there's no fresh, there's no water supply, for example. There are no footpaths in many communities. There are no accessible transport options in any region remote communities. I think it's still the case for our community members in Tennant Creek, for example. If you cannot access what you would call an informal transport option, as in what I'm saying, getting a lift with someone down to Alice Springs for your health appointment, you've got to wait for the Greyhound bus that comes through town, I think at four AM in the morning, and is not wheelchair accessible anyway. So you get carried up the steps of the bus into the, so a planner needs to understand all those things. And that's where it does look different. So if we have planners who are First Nations people, who have an understanding of this context, then I think we have a better chance of this working. Does that look different? I guess it does, Chair, but in a way, it's about following the principles of choice and control. And I think the other question that June touched on, when we're in community, we often ask the question, what makes you strong? To the First Nations person with disability, we don't ask the question. But then a lot of Australians with disability, I would argue, Chair, would love to be asked the same question. What makes you strong? What makes you, well, what we mean by that is, what gives you the opportunity? What opportunity to participate in your own community, in the wider community? That's a different question than what's your diagnosis. So I guess, yeah, they're different starting points in a way.
Thank you both for those answers. Ms. McMahon, I apologize yet again for the interruption.
Not at all, thank you, Chair. I might just move on, move back to some of the barriers that we were speaking about earlier in June. I just wanted to ask you, in response to the Promoting Inclusion Issues paper, F B D N identified that the threat of child removal and engagement with the Child Protection System has been a barrier to accessing the N D I S. Can you just explain this further in terms of what you hear and what you've observed?
Yeah, so for most of our communities, you know, as we would now have a fear of the welfare system and more importantly, you know, for our mothers and families that may have, you know, children with severe disabilities, you know, they're afraid that they'll be taken rather than be supported. So an example I could give, in a remote community in Utopia, we were well aware of nine families there that had children with severe disabilities that had never left the house. They were hidden from the community because there was a fear that the children would be taken and they'd never be seen again because, as Damian said about transport issues, even if they were brought down to Alice Springs, you know, most of the families lose touch. So, you know, there is that fear across Australia, but more importantly, in our rural and remote communities, that when you identify your child as having some form of difference, it may mean the welfare will get involved or, you know, other elements will get involved in your life and not understand how you support that child culturally.
But are you hearing specifically from people you represent that that is affecting their decision to engage with the N D I S or disability services?
Yeah, always, it has always been right from the beginning of the scheme. I have, you know, personal friends that don't connect with children and family members with, you know, severe disabilities because they've already had, you know, touch points where they're feared about their child being removed.
And you would have heard or read the evidence of M P Y W C on Tuesday, where a third of the children in their disabilities report indeed were taken off country because of the lack of services. Are you seeing in other areas across Australia a situation where children are having to go off country to get the services they need?
Yeah, definitely, we've seen it, you know, with most of our work, you know, nationally, then, you know, particularly in rural and remote communities, there isn't a service sector. There isn't a will to build a service sector or, as Damian has said, you know, develop a service sector locally that can support the families. But it's more about education with, you know, our communities, how, you know, they can support their families. So the concept that, you know, a child will get, and we understand that, there usually are more supports in, you know, metropolitan or higher populated regions. But that dispossession of country and culture is always, you know, foremost for our communities, you know. And, you know, families would rather the child participate, you know, in cultural activities, living in community, you know, learning language than maybe having some of the, you know, allied supports.
That are not in our country.
You know, educational component too.
And can I just ask also, June, for those families and children, if you have spoken to, who have gone off country to get those supports, how, can you explain to the commissioners the impact upon them personally, perhaps from a social and emotional wellbeing point of view and their families and community?
What normally happens, you know, anecdotally, you know, to, for most of our children, they end up in a mainstream service. that doesn't understand their culture, you know, particularly those that may have, you know, um quite high needs, whether that's language needs or communication needs. They don't understand, maybe they're locally interpreting, you know, ways of doing business. So, you know, I can, you know, I've seen it myself here in Alice Springs with a child, you know, with quite physical high needs and has intellectual needs. It's left in a corner all day long, crying to their self because there's no interaction. And that's because the workforce don't know how to work appropriately, you know, with our First Nations children and and appropriate engagement, whether that's in language or in culture. They try, but there's not enough understanding.
So it's an impact of cultural incompetence.
Correct.
Um, I might just move on to a few issues with regards to planning. Um, at twenty-nine and forty of your joint statement, you indicate that many people are unable to incorporate cultural connections to land and family into their plans. Um, perhaps I might just stay with you, June, for a moment. If you could just explain why that's so important? And secondly, if you can think of any um examples, particularly with regards to men's or women's business, where it may have been included in a plan?
Yeah, so, you know, this has always been an issue for our families that they haven't been able to, you know, implement or people understand what they mean by cultural business. And an example I would give, and this is not in all communities, but in some communities. So a young man, you know, reaching teenage years needs to be able to participate in cultural business to become an adult. And that's the cultural protocols, in particular, you know, family groups and cultural groups. So if that young person, even as a person with disability, doesn't participate in that cultural initiation and programs, they remain a boy all their life and have to stay in the care of their mother or their aunties or other female groups. So they're never seen as a man in that that community. And that concept in the NDIS, in the planning development is not understood at all. You know, to support tho- those children to be able to participate in out in country. And that may mean for three months at time. So it's not adequately funded in regards to, you know, them being supported to do that cultural business.
Without um naming participants, of course, but have you um have, is there an example where there has been that support provided?
Yeah, yeah. So um I'm quite aware of um a few people that, you know, that happened to, um particularly in Western Australia and here in the Northern Territory. And it was only the support of informal advocates, unfunded advocates, that understood this role and fought with the agency for over two years for this to be enabled. That one or two of these, you know, were supported to do that business out on country. But it it just didn't happen naturally.
Apart from those couple of examples, can you think of any other um times where that sort of support has been offered through a plan?
Not really, no.
All right. Now, you spoke earlier about underutilization um of plans. Is that something that FPDN sees as a widespread issue?
Correct. Yeah, so it's, you know, more so lack of understanding, education and knowledge, what is in that plan, even having the plan available. But the language barrier, you know, regards to English and traditional language, it means nothing to communities. So I personally have sat down in the Torres Straits and worked through plans with families for them for them to understand what the line item means and how they can utilize that or the flexibility with that line item. So none of those things are explained to individuals or the families who are supporting that person.
And here you're also starting to talk about cultural safety incompetence. Um, what are your observations? And Damian, perhaps if you'd like to comment of the cultural safety incompetence of NDI staff or what you're hearing and also mainstream services in remote and very remote areas?
Um, very poor. Um, a- and the point of the examples that June's just raised, um, I think demonstrate that well. So I I think if I may relate that to the child removal issue. So we need the agency to better understand that having conversations and talking to family members about their child is very loaded, very risky, and to share and to ask the system for help is a risk for many First Nations people. Because the reality is, and we know that I think I have this right, that across every jurisdiction in Australia now, we have increased removal of First Nations children. I I believe it's across every jurisdiction. I'm happy to be corrected there, but it's, uh, if it's not, it's certainly close. And that's because the system isn't understanding of the power imbalance between First Nations communities and the system. So I I will say things like bureaucracies and stuff like that. So if you are a parent of a child, a First Nations parent of a of a child, a First Nations child with disability, to seek help comes with significant risk because the system may make judgments around you which are not contextual. So I can remember of many examples in the um child welfare sector where a fairly crude example, but an inexperienced um child um welfare officer, I don't know if that's the right term these days, but um may walk into a house, open the fridge and not see any food in it and make an assumption that the family is not providing adequate nutrition to the to the child. The reality is the family can't do that because they live in abject poverty. So the symptom is poverty. It's got nothing to do with love or um neglect. And we need a system that better understands that. I think one way to do that is have Aboriginal planners. Now, I assume there are Aboriginal planners, I believe there are, um, but I haven't met too many, um, and I don't know that Junie has either. So that's something to me that needs to be immediately addressed. Because unless you have the contextual understanding that, you know, in regional remote Australia, as Commissioners, and I'm sure the Chair would be aware, that accessing fresh fruit and produce in regional remote Australia is almost impossible. Or the last time I was out in far western New South Wales, and I imagine these prices are only going up in the context of, you know, the economy, the global economy. That the last time I was out in western New South Wales, they were charging thirteen dollars for a two litre bottle of orange juice. So, um, so uh you can't do that. If you have no means of income, uh, or even if you, dare I say, if you're on the cashless, if you're on the cashless welfare card, then you may not be able to have the means to purchase things to maintain good nutrition. So unless you have the context, you're going to rush to judgment and make assumptions about, which sometimes are uh assumptions based on a lack of understanding of the reality of the lives of many First Nations people living in regional remote Australia. So I think we need to invest in more training of NDI staff, and we offer that that sort of training at the First People's Discipline Network. It's not training that is about white guilt, if you like. It's not about making the system feel bad about itself, I suppose. It's more around giving a context so that people have better, you know, planners, local area coordinators, even the executive of the agency has some understanding of regional remote Australia. The only other point I'd make, and I think it's a credit to the Commission, the Commission's held the hearings at Alice Springs. You know, I think that's really important because um very few Australians, I think, have a real understanding of the lives of First Nations people in regional remote Australia. I really believe that. Um, you know, largely urbanized country, living in big cities. Um, you know, there's things that we see in regional remote Australia um that are deeply traumatized. Um, I'm aware of families in some communities that every morning have to fresh, have to fetch fresh water, go to a tap because they don't have a means to uh do it themselves. I mean, these are things that you would hear, are stories that come out of Africa, to be honest with you. Um, and I think that's what probably, in a big picture sense, is lacking with the scheme. Is really understanding the context of the lives of many First Nations people with disability in regional remote Australia. If we can get the system to better understand that, but if we can also get communities themselves to be the solution, then we'll come up with a response, I think, that is not only culturally safe and culturally appropriate, but I imagine more cost effective. And we also create an environment where we, if we can do this business, if we can do disability business well in regional remote Australia, then why can't we do housing well, education well, health services well? So I think we have an opportunity and and we don't want to, I guess, the system, I think, sometimes reflects and thinks, this Jesus sounds really hard, but I don't know that it is. And we're also not talking about millions and millions of Australians here. You know, we're not talking about half a million Australians. We're not talking about three million Australians. We're talking about a certain number of Australians. We're in a rich country like ours, full of smart people. We we should be able to do better, but the benefits could could relate to a whole lot of other areas of life for First Nations communities, education, employment, transport, you name it.
And Damian, I understand that um the solution, or one of the solutions that FPDN offers um in terms of that context and understanding of context is First Nations representations at all levels of NDI um and preferably those that are based locally for the provision of services. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Now, I'm I'm conscious of time, um, so I'm going to move on um to ask you just one final question before moving to some structural reform questions. Um, so June, at paragraph sixty-nine um of your statement, you indicate that families should be supported by the NDIS to provide disability supports. Can you please um explain to the Commissioners FPDN's position on that?
Sorry.
That families should be supported by NDIS to provide disability supports.
Correct, yeah. So, you know, as we know, you know, generally for our communities, you know, first of all, there's a fear of outsiders coming in to support, and there's a shame element to that. You know, for those that do gain, you know, some support, you know, within their contents of a person with disability or in their own. So, you know, if we're talking about, you know, building resilience, building a workforce, you know, the families are the ones that know how to, you know, operate and and support those individuals living in their um immediate family or community. They know the different cultural elements, you know, and and that relates back to men's and women's business. So who can work with those particular individuals or different skin groups or different cultural groups? So that is why it is important that, you know, we empower the families to do this work. And and it needs to be, you know, moved from the agency plan manager arrangement to self-managing families, self-manage their plans. But in saying that, again, back to you, Commissioner, they need educating and supporting in that. You know, it's not one size and how we can we empower them and what does it need to attain a certain level of understanding around brokerage models or, you know, accounting models or keeping receipts and that. But our families are resilient and we just need to, you know, it might be a short term proposal, one or two years. And then other family members, as we've heard yesterday, with the other stories, learning from each other, learning how a system works. But we haven't invested in that enough to educate and support individual families to know that they have options.
And is it?
You know, and I think, you know, uh, this scheme has not allowed our people to be independent of a welfare system. We're creating another welfare system into the scheme because we haven't allowed for choice and control with individuals and more importantly, with that First Nations person living with disability. They do have a voice and we need to hear.
Thank you, Jean. Um, now, just before we go on to questions um from the Commissioners, I just have a couple of further questions about the future. Um, June, your ten-point plan represents, does it, the ongoing recommendations of FPDN for First Nations people with disability in remote and very remote communities? Is that right?
Sorry.
Sorry, does your ten-point plan represent your ongoing recommendations to the Royal Commission?
Yes.
In this hearing?
Yes.
Um, Damian, you've been appointed um to the National Working Group um of the Indigenous Voice to Parliament. What's your view about the significance of enshining the voice as it relates to First Nations people with disability in remote and very remote communities?
Yes, well, I mean, that working group has now completed its work, but yes, I was appointed to the National Working Group for the Indigenous Voice to Parliament. So that is obviously another opportunity and one of the recommendations we made through that process, that there be a standing committee made up of First Nations people with disability who would provide advice to the Indigenous Voice to Parliament. And um it was uh wonderful to see uh leadership, First Nations leadership endorse that approach. So with the uh hopefully successful uh passing of a referendum, uh when that time comes, we would hope that that system or that that system, that approach of an Indigenous Voice to Parliament will have within it a standing committee on disability, which is another way to ensure we give voice to some of our most vulnerable Australians. So.
Now, before um I ask Commissioners if they have any questions, June, is there anything else that you would like to um say at this hearing?
I think, you know, for FPDN, you know, we were excited when the scheme evolved and and it was, you know, a lot of work of, you know, the disability rights movement to make change in Australia. And for FPDN, as I said, we were excited that First Nation, First Nations people with disability will have the opportunity to participate and 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 enjoy, you know, um parts of Australia that, you know, whether that's employment or education that, you know, many other people, you know, are allowed to do. But we haven't seen that change. And it saddens me, you know, that, you know, we're this far down the track, enough of this change for many of our communities, for many of our individuals. So, you know, we, you know, we advocated for this commission and so we would hope, you know, that strong recommendations come out of it and people are actually listening. You know, as one elder said to me, you know, up in um Far North here, you know, if we're not listening, we won't hear them. And that, you know, I think about that every day, you know, we need to be listening, you know, because they have the solutions. You know, they know what needs to be done, you know, in their particular communities. And again, it goes back to one not, one size doesn't fit all. But also I'd like to finish, you know, with the words of our founding elder Uncle Esther Bostock, who wrote these words, you know, more than thirty years ago now. And he talked, and I was talking about double disadvantage for First Nations people. To be Aboriginal in Australia today is a disadvantage and we still see it in twenty twenty-two. And to be an Aboriginal person living with disability is a double disadvantage. So when are we going to change that narrative?
Thank you, Jean. And and just briefly, Damian, um, is there anything further that you wanted to add?
Um, other than to say that, um, like June said, communities themselves have the solutions and they've always had those solutions. And it's almost about returning to the old way of doing things. So disability has always been an accepted part of the human experience. We know that from the evidence that is at Lake Mungo. So we are thought leaders on on inclusion. What's lacking though is community infrastructure and opportunity. And we're missing an opportunity, I think, every day to create a micro economies within our communities, to create employment opportunities and to go back to the old ways of doing things, which is about people supporting one another to stay on country.
Thank you, Damian. Chair?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I shall ask first, if uh you don't mind, Commissioner, if she has any questions for you.
Um, I just had one for uh June. You were talking um and responding to the Chair's question about criteria um in in bringing people into the scheme. We talked about it needing to be uh more uh human process, really, human rights process of what do you, what is your strength, but also where do you need help? Um, and it struck me as And it struck me as an interesting perspective around activating workforce, because family around actually say that every day, where people struggle as well as where they can do things in the community. Do you think that approach is a much more of a better platform to activate people to work within the NDIS scheme rather than the approach that's being taken now?
Correct, yeah. I think, you know, we know it's not working. So we need to go back to the rule principles about, you know, speaking to communities, what is needed in those particular communities, and then starting from that essence of, you know, building a workforce. But, you know, supporting people to understand, you know, whether it's, you know, our own communities, our own, you know, archer sector, our own service sectors, what does disability mean, you know, in the perspective of, you know, different disability types? What is cost disability? And there isn't an understanding about that. We know that, you know, people don't understand the CRBD principles and the rights of a person with disability. So it's education and training for all of those, and it has to be continuing. So I think, you know, we have opportunities there, as Damian said, to, you know, economies of scales, to build markets, to build, you know, education is power. And that's what, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, a system over here that doesn't support others to, you know, build their knowledge and strength. But we have to come from a cultural element when I say that, you know, like, as Damian said, when we go out in community, we don't talk about disability, we talk about what keeps you strong. So people, you know, it's breaking down the language and, you know, and I think there's, you know, so much more work that needs to be done with all government agencies to understand our perspective, you know, and we all are equal partners coming to the table. So I think, you know, in the end, it's a lot of work to be done, but, you know, I think it can be done. We just have to, you know, take time, be flexible, and bring everyone at the same time. And if that takes a while, it takes a while. I'm not sure if that answered it.
No, that's great. Thank you, Damian, for your evidence this morning.
Commissioner McKeown, do you have any questions?
I have one question. And then thank you, June and Damian, for your evidence. My question is around other model. What's your observation or experience of other models across other government systems, such as either Commonwealth or state and territory, that where you have seen culturally appropriate service to work? So for example, Damian, you mentioned very briefly earlier, housing, education, et cetera. We will hear from Nacho later. So putting health aside, or culturally appropriate health services aside, have you seen any other model across education or housing in Australia that have been culturally appropriate, that have worked? And if so, what could we draw from those? And I'll direct it to both of you.
I'll let you go, Damian.
Sure, Jean. So, Commissioner, I think a contemporary example I can give relates to a genuine co-design approach, which was undertaken by the National Indigenous Australians Agency in relation to the Indigenous Voice to Parliament. So the elements of that that were a unique experience for me professionally, having worked in this area now for more than 20 years and sat on probably hundreds of committees. This was about genuine power sharing. It was about time. So there was a lot of meetings. There was a lot of time taken. It wasn't a two-hour meeting. It was whatever needed to be done. It was co-chaired between government official, officials, senior government official and senior First Nations leadership. And the NDIA, the NDIS, is an outlier in relation to genuine co-design. So they need to catch up in some ways with some other agencies that are doing this better. Now, I'm not romanticising this. There's a very, very long way to go. There's still agencies that are, but we can also look to the Victorian experience around the treaty body and truth telling approach down there, which is no doubt an evolution in this. It's an evolved approach unique in Australian history. The Indigenous Voice to Parliament potentially is a unique moment in Australian history. The design of it, in my experience, was the best process I've been involved in professionally in terms of the level of commitment, the ability and genuineness of the system to listen. And I think June's point before around listening is a skill set, is a skill that the system doesn't possess very well in relation to First Nations people. And the NDIA in particular has a very, very long way to go. We're prepared and willing and able to go on that journey with the agency in the spirit of making things better for our people. And the agency also needs to come to the table with that same starting point, as opposed to a starting point that might be about cost cutting or cost savings or whatever. This has just got to be about what's the right thing that a civilised society does to support its most vulnerable people. I'll leave it there. Thanks, Commissioner.
Ms. Rema, do you want to add anything?
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you. And I also want to acknowledge the work that you and FPDN continue to do, and I acknowledge and pay tribute to Uncle Lester and Auntie Gail, the founders. And I can see that you are honouring their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be hearing a little later, as you probably know, from the NDIA. And we have some quite detailed information in statements that you may not yet have seen. In the statement of Mr. McNair, he refers to the engagement strategy that the NDIA released in March 2017, and to a progress update report on that strategy in 2021. This is, I should say, paragraph 66 to 71 of that statement. He then goes on to say that the NDIA has recently commenced my initial stakeholder engagement as part of the refresh of the strategy, and that's expected to take 12 months to complete. And the approach is detailed in the Engagement Framework 2022. And through this process, the NDIA expects to gain a deeper understanding about the experiences and challenges people from First Nations background have in accessing and navigating the NDIS. My question is, are you aware of this process? And have you been invited to participate in it? And then a further sub-question, do you have any comments about the process?
Yeah, we've had one meeting today. We actually have another meeting next week. So the process is in place. The team they've built, I would, you know, we're positive about that, you know, that they are listening and they are hearing and have gone back, you know, and researched other evidence that we've told them to look at in regards to. I guess the point for FPDN is, we are engaged in, you know, a lot of these processes over many years, Commissioner, but our capacity is very limited too. You know, so being engaged today or, you know, while I've been in Alice Springs, I've been working on other programs. You know, FPDN's capacity needs to be built. We need to be at all these tables, because we know if we're not at the table, disability doesn't get discussed in regards to First Nations people. But, you know, enhancing our capacity and building, you know, our enablement to be that strong voice at every area. And, you know, that's the issue for FPDN. We know this is really important, so we're investing in that refresh. But, you know, how it will look and how it will roll over the next year also depends on how much capacity we have. Can we be at that table, you know, to really instill, you know, and make those differences?
But do I take it from what you've just said that you regard the process as appropriate and promising?
As I said, we've had one meeting. So we'll see how it goes.
Too early to say?
Yes. And we have the next one next week, yeah.
Right.
So, but those involved at this stage are committed for change. And, you know, I think it's looking good.
That's what Chu Enlai said when asked about the French Revolution. He said it was too early to tell. That's a fact. Mr. Griffiths, do you have anything to add on this?
Yeah, I'd just add a little bit further to what Juney said. Yes, I think in my earlier testimony, I think I might have mentioned in the last six months or so, there's been been a shift. Like June, we'll wait and see. You know, it's not unusual for us to go down these sort of approaches and, you know, we'll wait and see. But I guess the other thing we'll be keen to see is, let's not call it a refresh, because we'd argue the first fresh, first version wasn't that fresh, if I may say that. So we want to almost start over in some ways. And I think we've certainly made that clear to the, to the, to the agency. So, yeah, the first meeting was positive. We've got another one next week. Yeah, let's hope we've turned over a new page.
Okay, thank you. Just before we finish, sorry, you're about to-
No, Jean, just excuse me.
I was just going to ask whether there's any application from any represented party to ask Ms. Rema or Mr. Griffiths' question. If there's no leaping up, I shall assume that there's no such request. Just before finishing, can I just take up something that Mr. Griffiths said? You indicated that it was important to hold this hearing in Elder Springs, and indeed it is. I do want to make the point that if we had not been subject to extraordinary interruptions through COVID-19, we were talking about, and hopefully we could have had hearings actually in even more remote areas than Alice Springs. That was one of the approaches that we were considering. And I do believe we would have done that. There are ways in which hearings can be held that don't necessarily involve a major convention centre and all of the trappings that go with it. With native title cases, as you will know, in the federal court, you can have hearings, indeed I had some, on hilltops and outside and so on. So unfortunately, one of the limiting factors for this Royal Commission has been the limitations on travel and the logistical arrangements that are necessarily involved in travelling to remote areas. We, up to date, despite our best efforts, we haven't been able to hold a hearing in Western Australia at all. We will do so unless there's further interruptions. But I just wanted to make the point that I agree entirely, and I'm sure my colleagues agree entirely with what Mr. Griffiths said, and it's one of those limitations and a pity that we haven't been able to, ourselves as Commissioners, of course, Commissioner Mason has travelled to many of these areas, but that's just one of the limitations to which we have been subject. I want to thank you both for not only your evidence and for the very stimulating conversations that we've had today, but also, again, for the contribution to the Royal Commission and for the work that you have done in, to use the language that you've used this morning, to support and improve the position of the most vulnerable people in this country. So thank you very much indeed for your contribution.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Chair, we're running about five to 10 minutes over time. Perhaps if we could have an adjournment now until, say, 10 past 12, would that suit?
Yes, we can. We'll do that. We'll adjourn till 10 past 12. I would have thought 10 minutes before time is really almost punctual. We'll adjourn till 10 past 12.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. Silence, please. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms. McNair.
Chair, Commissioners, you'll now hear from Pat Turner, CEO of the National Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Organisation, who's here in the hearing room, and Jenny Bedford, the Chief Operating Officer of the Kimberley Medical Aboriginal Medical Services, who will be appearing remotely, as well as Cassie Atchison, CEO of Broome Regional Aboriginal Medical Service. Ms. Turner will take an affirmation, Chair, and Ms. Bedford and Ms. Atchison will take an oath.
Ms. Turner, Ms. Atchison, Ms. Bedford, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence, in one case remotely and another in person. We're very grateful for the extremely detailed statements that we have that are very helpful to us. And we appreciate the work, the contributions you've made to the Royal Commission, both for this hearing and in other ways. So thank you very much. And we're grateful for your willingness to give evidence today. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who is in the hearing room, she will administer the oath or affirmation, as the case may be.
Ms. Turner, I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes, or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Ms. Bedford and Ms. Atchison, I will read you both the oath. At the end, please both say yes, or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. McNair, Ms. McNair will now ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Turner, you have provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the 27th of June 2022. Are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes.
Ms. Bedford and Ms. Atchison, you have provided a joint statement dated the 17th of June 2022. May I please also confirm with you that the contents of that joint statement are true and correct?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioners, Nacho have provided other submissions and reports, which you'll find at tabs 85 to 89 in Hearing Bundle A. And they also include a final report of the NDIS Capacity Building Project at tab 85. Cairns also provide two annexes, which will be no doubt referred to in evidence this afternoon at tabs 81 and 82 of the bundles. Ms. Turner, could you please give a brief overview of Nacho's work and your role in the key area, sorry, the key areas of Nacho's work?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for inviting me here today to speak with you about disability, a critical issue for our people and our communities. Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands we are meeting on today. These are the lands of the Arundha people, my people. I pay my respects to elders past and present, and thank them for their continuing openness to have us live, work, and meet on their land. I am the daughter of an Arundha man and a Gadangji woman. I was raised here in Alice Springs. I am the CEO of the National Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Organisation and the lead convener of the Coalition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island Peak organisations, working with all governments in Australia to close the gap between our people and others. Nacho is the National Peak Body representing 145 community-controlled health organisations across Australia. Our members deliver comprehensive primary healthcare from about 550 clinics across Australia. We deliver over 3.1 million episodes of care each year for more than 410,000 people. This includes 1 million episodes of care in very remote regions. More than a third of our archers are located in remote and very remote communities. As well as clinic services, many archers provide home and site visits, medical, public health and health promotion services, allied health, nursing services, assistance with making appointments and transport, helping access childcare, or dealing with the justice system, drug and alcohol services, and help with that income support. Many are expanding into disability and aged care service delivery. Many are expanding into disability and aged care service delivery.
Thank you, um, Ms. Turner. Ms. Bedford, um, could you please describe your role at CAMHS and the services, um, offered there?
Yes, um, I would also like to start by acknowledging, um, that I'm meeting, uh, I'm here in Broome, uh, on the lands of the Yaru people. Um, and that we're meeting, um, uh, today on the lands of the Arundu people in Alice Springs. I'd like to pay my respects to elders past and present, and thank them for the opportunity to live and work on such beautiful country. Um, if I could introduce myself, uh, my father was a Gidji man and my mother's a Jarro woman, and I'm from Horse Creek, uh, in the East Kimberley region. I work at the Kimberley Aboriginal Medical Services as a Chief Operating Officer. Uh, CAMHS is a regional Aboriginal community-controlled health service, which was established in 1986 as a cooperative between the Broome Regional Aboriginal Medical Service and what is now the Ord Valley Aboriginal Health Service. And our role is to provide support to our members who are located in, in the towns and remote communities right across the Kimberley. Uh, CAMHS is governed by a board of directors, which is comprised of representatives from each of our eight member organisations. Um, and our members include the Beagle Bay Aboriginal Community, uh, Aboriginal Corporation, uh, the Bidjitanga Aboriginal Corporation Lug Range, the Broome Regional Aboriginal Medical Service, the Derby Aboriginal Health Service, Millia Ramara Aboriginal Corporation, Nirambuk Environmental Health Services, Ord Valley Aboriginal Health Service and Yuriyangi Medical Service in Horse Creek. We exist because of our members and along with the support that we provide, we also represent our members' interests on critical issues that affect us. CAMHS delivers primary healthcare from, uh, five remote clinics, uh, located in the communities of Balgo, Billaluna, Mullin, Beagle Bay and Bidjitanga. We also deliver dialysis care from renal health services, uh, centres located in Broome, Derby, Fitzroy Crossing and Kanunara. And through our, uh, primary healthcare services in remote communities, um, CAMHS and, uh, member services delivered over 169,000, uh, episodes of care to more than 23,000, uh, people in the 2021 financial year.
Thank you, Ms. Bedford. And, uh, Ms. Atchison, if you could just explain what your role is at CAMHS, please.
Good afternoon. Um, I would also like to pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Broome Regional Aboriginal Medical Services. Brahms is an Aboriginal community-controlled medical services, and we've been caring for the Broome community for more than 40 years. Uh, when Brahms opened our doors in 1978, we were the first remote Aboriginal medical service in Western Australia. We provide comprehensive, um, primary healthcare, social emotional wellbeing services, Asian disability services to Aboriginal people living in the Broome region. We deliver more than 45,000 occasions, occasions of service each year to over 7,000 people. Uh, Brahms is also a registered NDIS provider, uh, and we become registered in April 2020, and we provide services to over 110 Aboriginal people in the Broome region.
Thank you, Ms. Atchison. Ms. Turner, in relation to your 2019 capacity building report, um, and this is also expressed in your statement, that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people express a clear preference for access to community-controlled services. Why is that?
Our people prefer to access services where they are confident in their cultural, that their cultural safety is guaranteed. Aboriginal community-controlled health services are highly visible and trusted in Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities. Many of our people will bypass mainstream services to access our services where they are confident of cultural respect and cultural safety. Archos provide embedded understandings and lived experience and are a culturally safe place for all community members to access primary healthcare and other services free from stigma and, and shame. Archos often employ local Aboriginal community members who often have no formal qualifications but are essential to help bridge the gap between health professionals and families.
Thank you. And Ms. Bedford, is that your experience as well, uh, in Kimberley? In terms of, uh, an expression of preference for Aboriginal-controlled services?
Yes, it is. Um, I strongly, uh, agree with what, um, Ms. Turner's saying there. Um, you know, the delivery of disability services and primary healthcare services, um, in our region is a very personal thing. Uh, because we're delivering services to our families, um, and to our extended families. Um, our fa, our communities feel safe accessing our services because they trust and they respect us. Um, Archos and Echoes across the region, um, uh, culturally safe services. Um, and in, in, by that I mean that we employ local Aboriginal people to deliver services to local Aboriginal communities. Um, we have a model of care which dictates that we walk side by side with our community in the delivery of our services. Um, and so we engage with, um, Aboriginal people and communities at their pace. Um, and we work within, uh, a person and family-centred model. Uh, this is a critical point of difference between the archers sector, uh, and mainstream services.
Ms. Bedford, if I could just pick up on something you said a moment ago, that you work in a person-centred and a family-centred. Can you just, uh, explain if there's any difference between those two approaches from your point of view?
Uh, the archers' model of care, um, talks to, um, a person-centred approach, but it also has some key principles included in it around family. And so when we're working with, um, individuals, we include the family in conversations around, um, you know, a first diagnosis, for instance, of a chronic disease or, um, you know, in terms of the way that we engage. Um, so it, it's absolutely critical that we have a person-centred approach, so the individual can actually lead clinicians in the delivery of care, but also that we're involving family in the conversations that we're having, uh, with the individual around care, um, and support.
And can I just ask one further question in regards to the family, um, centred approach? Is that important or critical, um, to First Nations people with disability accessing the NDIS?
Absolutely. Um, you know, our, our cultural obligations are, um, very strong, um, and we have obligations within our families to look after everyone in our family. Um, and so, um, the archers' model of care talks about family being one of those key principles um, around the way that we care and support for, um, for individuals. So having, um, having, uh, access to the individual but also the family is a critical, uh, part of service delivery.
And Commissioners, um, Ms. Bedford's referring to the archers' model of care. That's at, um, tab 81 of your bundle, if you wanted to refer to that. Um, may I just also ask, in relation to family-centred, is that also important, uh, in relation to the engagement of First Nations people with disability in remote areas engaging in services, disability services?
Um, yes, I believe so. I think, um, we have dedicated roles that, um, that, and we'll talk a little bit about that in terms of the Kimberley Supports Consortium. But through the model of care and the way that we deliver, say, primary healthcare from our remote, um, our remote clinics, um, we make sure that we have local, um, people working in our clinics and there are designated roles like the Aboriginal health worker role. Within disability, um, and particularly in our remote early childhood support programme, we have family support workers who are, who are absolutely critical to the delivery of the programme because they, um, are able to connect, uh, non-Aboriginal, um, allied health teams to local Aboriginal communities, families and individuals.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Turner. The second key issue in your capacity report, or one of the foundational issues, is that you state that Archos and Echoes are best placed to provide supports to First Nations people, um, with disability. And just before I ask you why that is, I just want to, um, indicate to the witnesses, if you could just slow down a little bit for our interpreters, um, that would be helpful. Uh, but why is it that Archos and Echoes are best placed?
This is not just Nacho's opinion. Research which is cited in our statement um, shows that Archos are best placed to respond to the social and cultural determinants of health. Our people and our Archos have a more holistic view of health. Everything connects. Your spiritual, mental, physical wellbeing is all connected. You cannot separate one from the other. And our people understand this. It's how we live. Our communities have a deep sense of heart for our people with a disability. We don't exclude people from cultural events or gatherings just because they are disabled. We try to include people in everything that happens in community. We know that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people continue to experience racism across the general health sector and that this impacts on their health outcomes. That is why Archos services are critical to the successful uptake and delivery of the NDIS to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with disability. They ensure services for our people are culturally intelligent and appropriate. And this is why our people prefer to access community-controlled services.
Thank you. And just some, um, questions relating to data, Ms. Turner. Um, Nacho cites in your statement the DSP and ABS data, and this is at paragraph 38, Commissioners, to identify that there's high rates of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with disability. What are Nacho's observations of the rates of First Nations people accessing the NDIS?
Well, there is limited data available on the number of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with disability. The ABS estimates severe and profound disability at 7.3% for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and the overall rate of disability at 23.9% for our people. The NDIA forecasted that around 7.8% of people on NDIS would be Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander. Currently, 7.2% of participants, that's 37,345 people who have an NDIS plan, identify as Aboriginal and Tor, or Torres Strait Islander. However, this is considerably less than the estimated number of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with a disability. While participation rates appear to be tracking to the NDIA forecast, we aren't seeing effective utilisation of those plans. There are significant underspends in NDIS plans which demonstrate that even though our people are becoming NDIS participants, they can't access the services they need. This is compounded in remote and very remote areas due to the thin markets. Many services are not available, or those that are may not be culturally safe for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. So more data is needed on the prevalence of disability in Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to ensure that we can make better informed decisions and direct funding to where it is most needed. Any nationally coordinated approach to data collection must adopt the principles outlined in Priority Reform Four of the National Agreement on Closing the Gap. And Priority Reform Four relates to governments sharing data and information with Aboriginal groups.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Um, I understand from your statement at 109, um, that Nacho is engaging in some mapping work in relation to understanding the demand for disability services in remote communities. Is Nacho funded to do this mapping work?
Well, as I previously stated, there is limited data available to ascertain the true level of need of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with disabilities, and therefore what resourcing our Archos need to support them. Nacho started undertaking work to better understand the levels of demand for disability services in remote communities. This work has only scratched the surface of what the Archos are currently doing and what they need to support people with disability. Comprehensive mapping requires consulting across our sector to determine their capability and capacity to support community with disabilities.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And I might now turn to you, Ms. Atchison, uh, oh, sorry, Ms. Bedford first. Um, you explain in your statement that there has been a partnership, um, between Kimberley Archos, um, and Echoes and the NDIA. Could you just explain to the Commissioners how that partnership was initiated and how it developed?
Yes, um, representatives from the NDIA, uh, met with Kimberley leaders, um, on their NDIS model of, uh, service delivery. Um, and the Kimberley leaders at the time were very clear in saying to the NDIA that if you want to work in the Kimberley, you have to do it our way. And what our way meant was, um, involving not just the Kimberley Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Services, but also a number of Aboriginal community-controlled organisations, um, such as, um, Waringarri Aboriginal Corporation in Kanunara, um, uh, Winanari, uh, Aboriginal Corporation in Derby, uh, Mananwandi Guru in Fitzroy Crossing, um, to develop a consortium to deliver disability services to our community right across the region. Um, so the Kimberley leaders developed the consortium, um, and the consortium, um, uh, there are three elements to it. One is the Remote Community Connector Programme. Uh, the next one is the Evidence and Access Coordination Programme, and the last is the, um, Remote Early Childhood Support Programme. Um, CAMHS acts as the contract holder and auspices funds for the consortium. Um, and consortium members, such as those that I mentioned, um, deliver, uh, uh, programmes such as the Remote Community, um, Connector Programme, and Archos then deliver the Evidence and Access Programme. Uh, the Remote Early Childhood Programme is actually delivered, um, by, by CAMHS and also, uh, in conjunction with our consortium partners.
Thank you, Ms. Bedford. And Ms. Atchison, I want to turn to you now, um, to describe to the Commissioners a bit more detail about each of, um, the three programmes. And I'll start first with the Remote Community Connector Programme. Now, Commissioners, there's a very detailed explanation at 39 to 43 of their joint statement. Um, but if you could just give an overview, please, Ms. Atchison, of the programme, um, which I understand emphasises very much flexibility and a local approach.
The Remote Community Connector Programme was designed to engage with vulnerable people living with a disability, uh, to engage with trusted local community members to have discussions um, about their disability and how they can link into service providers. Um, this programme has been extremely powerful in our communities because we've engaged with a lot of community members who weren't aware, uh, that they had a disability or that they were eligible for NDIS or eligible for support. So there's been many people who have been able to be linked into services now who previously weren't having those, uh, services.
And Ms. Atchison, one of the elements that's, um, detailed in the explanation um, relates to the vulnerable participant check-in support in one of the communities. Can you just explain what that's about?
It's about maintaining, um, the connection with vulnerable people in the community who otherwise wouldn't have had that support previously. So, uh, particularly in some of the remote communities where there, there are very many services for people with a disability, the Remote Community Connectors have been able to engage with vulnerable people and maintain and build those relationships.
But what, what does it mean in terms of regularity, um, the check-in support? Is it something that's done randomly as people need it by local people on the ground? Is that the idea?
Yes, that's the concept of the programme.
Do you see that, perhaps I'm asking a very obvious question, but do you see that that aspect of the programme could be um, delivered by FIFO, DIDO or zoom in, zoom out type of model?
No, it's a, it's a model that needs to be delivered for the community, by the local community. Um, you lose engagement by flying in and out and doing those types of services. It's really important to have local people deliver those services so the community know where they are. where you can access people. You don't have to put the burden on the local community to have to navigate phone numbers and Zoom and technology and all those sorts of things.
Thank you. Now, the second programme that Ms Bedford just referred to is the Evidence Access and Coordination Planning Programme. Again, and this is at forty-five, Commissioners, what's the purpose and reach of this programme?
So the purpose of the Evidence Access and Coordination Planning Programme is to assist people with disabilities to test the eligibility for NDIS and to help people gather all the information and go through the process of being approved for an NDIS plan.
And have you been able to gather information or perhaps estimate the number of people that you've joined to the NDIS that otherwise may not have connected?
Yes, so since the programme started in late two thousand and nineteen, the programme has engaged with four hundred and seventy people and three hundred and sixty-one of those engagements or people that have engaged with the programme have met the criteria and now have an NDIS plan.
Thank you. And the last programme, the Remote Early Childhood Support Programme, which I understand is relevant to target four of the Closing the Gap targets, that is, children thriving their early years. Can you again please just explain the purpose of this programme to the Commissioners?
The purpose of the Early Childhood Supports Programme is to assist children aged between zero and seven who have a developmental delay or a disability to access early intervention support. The team employs an allied health team with child health nurse, speech pathologists, an occupational therapist and physiotherapist. The programme provides individual support with assessments, therapies, coordination of services and access to other services. A part of the programme is that we also employ Aboriginal family support workers who are the key and the linkages in engaging families and walking through that journey with families in accessing the allied health services.
Can you explain, please, your understanding of how the Community Connectors Programme was initiated and developed? Who was responsible for that in the first instance?
It was the, from what I understand, it was the consortium. Jenny Bedford may be able to talk more to that because that happened pre, pre my employment at Brahms, but I understand it was the consortium members that come up with the concept for the programme.
Ms Bedford, did you, did you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, I'm happy to. So the Kimberley leaders that came together to form the consortium developed the Remote Community Connector Programme. The Akos that I mentioned earlier, Wurundjeri Aboriginal Corporation, Wininari, and Nurunbuk Environmental Health are responsible for the delivery of the Remote Community Connector Programme. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of the work that they do is also based around trust and those organisations have been around for a very long time. Wurundjeri, for instance, in Kanunara has been in existence since nineteen seventy-nine, Nurunbuk since nineteen eighty-three and Wininari in Derby since nineteen eighty-three. So the work of Remote Community Connectors are absolutely critical in terms of identifying local people who are living with a disability, connecting them up to the Evidence and Access Coordinator role, but also promoting, promoting the service within community.
This may be only significant as a matter of history rather than anything else, but one of the statements on behalf of the NDIA describes the Community Connectors Programme as the NDIA's Community Connectors Programme. And the statement says that the NDIA has developed three Community Connector Programmes to support people with disability. These being the Remote Community Connectors, Evidence Access and Coordination of Planning and Remote Early Childhood Services may only be a matter of expression, but is that accurate from your perspective?
Look, I'm not quite sure if there were elements of co-design in the development of the programme way back when the Remote Community Connector Programme was established, but I do know that the Kimberley leadership played a very key role in identifying the need for the Connector Programme to be operating within our remote communities.
Right, thank you.
Ms Turner, did you want to add something?
Yeah. Commissioner, the idea came from the Aboriginal community representatives who know what works because of the years of experience. And when you look at organisations like Wininari and so on that Jenny has referred to, they don't just service the community in Derby, they service all of the outlying communities like up the Gib River Road and so on. But, you know, these people have had years of experience and they know what works and what doesn't. So what we did was we asked the NDIA to fund it. And what they gave us was twelve-month funding.
Just move on.
Thank you. Just briefly, Ms Atchison, just coming back to your Remote Early Childhood Support Programme, can you just tell the Commissioners firstly the current caseload and secondly, the role and importance of Aboriginal family support workforce to this programme?
Currently, we have a hundred and fifty-seven children engaged in the programme throughout the Kimberley region. And relating to the role and the importance of Aboriginal family support workers to this programme, these roles are significant. They help identify potential children who may require help with their development. They assist the allied health team to navigate the community, contact them to engage with the child and the family. And the family support worker helps the family and therapists completing intervention tasks and other related assessments. And they assist the family in accessing services and provide support throughout the whole process. So the family support workers don't just engage initially, they go through and follow the family through their journey, which has been quite successful in maintaining the engagement.
Thank you. Ms Turner, you're very aware of these programmes and the work of CAMHS and Brahms. But having been reminded of the work that they are doing, is this the sort of model that should be rolled out or replicated in other remote and very remote communities?
Well, it certainly worked in the Kimberley because the Aboriginal leadership in the Kimberley took the opportunity to form the consortium, take into account everybody's views and come up with solutions to, you know, the issues that were facing our communities. So if we had the same process whereby we could give the initiative to the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community leaders to come together to work out what will work best in their regions, I'm sure we'll have very similar approaches, but there would need to be variations according to local conditions. So, but the fact that it is community-led is the most important. And the lesson here for government is to learn from that and to trust what the local leaders are saying. There's been so much mistrust between the bureaucracy and Aboriginal people historically in this country. And those days are over. We've now got a seat at the negotiating table on closing the gap. And we have four priority reforms that are very important for all governments to implement right across the board in terms of shared decision-making between our peoples and government on all matters. Building and strengthening the Aboriginal community controlled sector to deliver services. Reforming mainstream agencies to be culturally safe and respectful in their engagements with Aboriginal people like police force, hospitals, out-of-home care, juvenile detention, all of those places. So there's a lot of work there, states and territories especially, to do. But there's also Commonwealth agencies that need to smarten up their act. And the last one is, of course, the sharing of data and information. Now, we see these as macroeconomic structural changes that need to happen in terms of changing the way governments work with our people right across the board. And if government agencies are not prepared to do that, in fact, this has been signed on by the Prime Minister, the premiers and the chief ministers and the President for Local Government Association, along with myself as the lead convener of the peaks in a national agreement that is historical and that we have a lot of work to do. And these priority reforms absolutely underpin that structural change that must occur.
And just speaking of structural change, does that include the voice, the Uluru statement?
Well, the voice is a different kettle of fish. That's been an aspiration in relation to the people who were participating in the consultations that were held at the time. I think that, you know, there are, I mean, I'm having a lot of discussions in Canberra with the government in relation to the voice and how they're going to take the referendum forward. And, you know, we'll have to wait and see what comes of the referendum. But the will looks as though it's there in the Australian people, among the Australian people, to support the creation of a constitutionally enshrined voice. And the reason people are so strong about that is because every other mechanism we've had in the past, like ATSEC and, you know, the NAC and the NACC and the Aboriginal Development Commission and all of those structures that were created at the Commonwealth level were all done away with the stroke of a pen because they were only legislated and not protected by the Constitution. So if we do get a voice, it will be something that will enable Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to vet all of the legislation that impacts on us going through the federal parliament and having and putting our perspectives forward to the parliament in their advisory capacity.
Thank you, Ms Turner. We're coming close to lunch, but before we do, I'd just like to turn back again to Ms Bedford and Ms Atchison. At sixty-four of your statement, you advocate the strength of the Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Sector model, which again is available in the hearing bundle. How do components of this model enhance the quality of support for First Nations people with disability in remote communities?
I'll start, Cassie, if that's okay. The Arches Model of Care and the, let me just go back. The Kimberley leaders framed the Kimberley Consortium on the Archer Model of Care. The model is built around the delivery of comprehensive, holistic and culturally safe primary healthcare services. But the principles that are contained within it are able to be applied to disability, to aged care, to any type of service delivery that organiser Akos or Arches wanted to deliver with our community. At the top of the model, there's recognition that Arches are more than just another health service. We put Aboriginal health into Aboriginal hands. And so there are some key domains within the model that talk about, you know, what are the things that make our community feel good and feel healthy? And they're things like, you know, culture, family, community. You know, it's not just about the physical health, it's about our spiritual health and our emotional health. And it's underpinned very strongly by cultural safety because culture is our life. And we give it the highest priority when we deliver services and programmes to our community. Again, this is another unique characteristic of the Arches and Echo sector in the Kimberley, but particularly around the Arches sector and the delivery of primary healthcare in remote communities. The model also is person-centred and family-centred. It ensures that the delivery of primary healthcare is delivered across the life course. And it also talks to an Aboriginal health worker-first model. So a key component of it is having a strong and confident Aboriginal health workforce. And so our primary healthcare services within our clinics are led by Aboriginal health workers.
And is that to be achieved by building local workforce and capacity building?
Yes, absolutely. It's, again, that issue of local Aboriginal people delivering services to our community. The Aboriginal health worker workforce is absolutely critical to the way that we deliver primary healthcare in remote communities. And in much the same way, Cassie spoke about the Aboriginal support worker workforce and the critical work that they do to bridge the cultural gap between our non-Aboriginal professionals, either within allied health teams from a remote early childhood programme perspective or from a primary healthcare perspective where our Aboriginal health workers bridge the cultural gap between our doctors and nurses and the community. Our Aboriginal health workers bring a skill set to our clinics that no other clinician has and that is that deep knowledge of their community. They have lived experience, they are trained clinically, they understand community, they are members of kinship systems. They understand what's happening in community around cultural business, whether it be funeral time or any other cultural activities that are happening in community. So they have this intrinsic knowledge about how individuals and families, you know, the issues that they're facing and the health problems that they may be presenting with at the clinic.
Atchison, did you want to add anything to what Ms Bedford said?
Yes, just to expand on what Jenny has spoken about. One of the key elements of the Echo Model of Care is that we treat and we value human rights. We treat our Aboriginal patients first and foremost as people. And we focus on the individual and the family and what they can do, not just focus on a medical condition or a disability. And our support focuses on achieving what the individual wants to achieve if it, in regards to their healthcare goals, their aspirations and the services we delivered are tailored to meet those circumstances. And some of that person-centered approach in the Model of Care helps people to be at the centre of the service. And we involve people in making decisions about their own lives. We take into consideration the person's experience, their age, their gender, their culture, heritage, language, beliefs and identity. And we support individuals and family units to build on their own capacities and their capabilities. And the Model of Care is strength-based. And we support cultural and cultural identity and we encourage participation and belonging in the community. And we're able to achieve that through what Ms Bedford said in regards to having a local Aboriginal workforce. We're culturally safe and having a multidisciplinary team approach to providing services to Aboriginal people.
Thank you. Ms Turner, I just have two questions for you following that evidence. The first is, is the Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Service model the model that's used by your members, all of your members?
Our aspiration is for every one of our health services, the hundred and forty-five, to deliver comprehensive primary healthcare. But we range from well-resourced Arches to not-so-well-resourced Arches. So not every health service that we have operates a fully, a full suite of comprehensive primary healthcare. They operate what they have funded at this point to do. So some are only very small clinics staffed by Aboriginal health workers and nurses in the main with visiting specialists or appointments made with other services as required by the community. They are small communities, obviously, where they exist. And, but in areas like the Kimberley, we have a very well-coordinated arrangement between the eight health services, the other Aboriginal Community Controlled organisations. And because everyone knows which organisation has responsibility for what areas of service delivery and who is best placed to be able to do that. And they can come to agreement like they have, for example, with the Community Connectors and so on. So we're not expecting that it'll only be our health services who will do the service delivery. We have, we try to have the most efficient and efficient We have, we try to have the most efficient and effective range of service delivery across areas. And in other parts of the country, it does operate similar, in similar ways.
So based on the strengths on the ground in a particular community?
Yes, absolutely.
And that aspiration for your members to be implementing this model comprehensively, that's a capacity-building issue?
It is a capacity-building issue. You did ask me earlier, if I might just go back, about whether we were funded uh, to undertake comprehensive mapping. Um, so, um, and as I said, it requires, comprehensive mapping requires consulting right across our sector to determine capability and capacity to support community with disabilities. This work has not uh, provided the full picture because we were not funded to undertake comprehensive mapping of our sector. We are currently drafting a final report, which is due at the end of August, that uh, prior to NDIS ready, fifty-three of our uh, of Nacho's hundred and forty-four members uh, were registered to provide NDIS services. This programme has made great strides in supporting the capacity building of Archos into NDIS provision. As per our last NDIS reporting period in January twenty-two, an additional seventy-one Archos have made meaningful progress towards NDIS service delivery, making a total of a hundred and twenty-four of our Archos, which is ninety percent of our members delivering disability services. And let me say, but there is no long-term commitment by government to build the capacity of the sector to become NDIS providers. I must say that I've had uh, uh, various uh, uh, clear uh, arguments with uh, NDIA about twelve-month funding and how useless that is. Because you recruit a whole bunch of Community Connectors, takes time to get people engaged, takes them, it takes time to get them up to speed with their roles and responsibilities and out there engaging with the community. And, you know, you can't have that done at the, at the start of the twelve-month period. And then, you know, their funding's up at the end of twelve months, so they are anxious to get other jobs and move on. Um, and trying to get NDIA to understand that we're not going to tolerate too much of this twelve-month funding nonsense anymore. And if they want us to do the work, then they have to fund us. They can't ring up, you know, the dropper of a hat and say, oh, um, you know, uh, have you done that comprehensive uh, assessment? No, because you didn't fund us to do it. And there's a bit of overlap at the moment between Social Security and NDIA, and it's a bit confusing, who's running the policy and who's running the programme. Um, so I might just throw that in.
And Ms Turner, just one final question. You've just mentioned the NDIS ready programme, and you've indicated the members um, that you've managed to um, become disability service providers for the NDIS. The funding for that programme finished on the thirtieth of June twenty-twenty-two, I understand.
That's right. And the Department of Health has given us a further nine months.
Further nine months, thank you.
Nine months' funding. You see what I mean about this intermittent, you know, twelve-months funding is absolutely useless. Now, I've been working with the Commonwealth Department of Health uh, on Archos base funding uh, since I started at Nacho in two thousand and sixteen. And we have now just been approved for four-year rolling funding for our services, which is a massive breakthrough, let me tell you, with indexation. So um, you know, that will help in terms of the planning and the um, and the maneuverability within those uh, period, within that four-year period. Um, and give greater flexibility uh, to our services uh, to manage their budgets more effectively. But this is where NDIA has to get real about uh, wanting the ex-Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to have access uh, and uh, and what it takes to do that in remote areas. And one of the reasons Nacho uh, encouraged our members uh, to be involved in this area in the first place is we're some of the, one of the few Aboriginal organisations nationally with our distributed membership of a hundred and forty-five services, um, who have a presence out there, you know, who are actually working in remote and very remote communities.
Yes.
Um, there's not very many other service deliveries out there as we are. Even legal services and other services have been forced to concentrate in the cities, not in uh, not out in the um, communities where the needs really are.
Thank you. And Chair, this might be a convenient time to take a lunch break unless there's any questions of the Commissioners.
What is your first bid for the lunch break? Your first bid for the time of the lunch break?
Um, until two o'clock?
Hmm.
Of course, it's a matter for you, Chair.
Yes, we'll resume at two oh two P M.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. Silence, please. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms McNamara.
Thank you, Chair. Nacho CAMs and BRAMs have all identified a number of barriers to accessing the NDIS and its services. The evidence this afternoon won't detail all of those barriers, um, but we just wish to raise a few of those or focus on a number of them. The first is cultural competence. And Ms Turner, if I may start with you, Nacho's observations, if you could please um, tell the Commissioners what are Nacho's observations of the cultural competence and cultural safety offered by NDIA staff um, and mainstream service providers?
Well, I think they're very minimal, um, really, in terms of cultural competency and understanding um, the difference uh, in approach required to engage uh, effectively with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people um, right throughout Australia. Um, so quite often we find ourselves in the position of having to um, navigate those paths with our clients to ensure they get a fair hearing. But I think the assessment process is open to unconscious bias because of the lack of understanding of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander cultural beliefs and practices. And uh, and uh, and I also think that um, you know, um, changing an organisation uh, to be culturally competent in their dealings with our people requires leadership from the very top.
Yes.
Um, from, you know, the chief executive right through uh, to, you know, the frontline staff, if you like, or people at the coalface uh, who do more of the engagement. So if you don't have that uh, cultural respect and understanding uh, throughout the organisation, you are not going to have the returns on the investment even uh, the NDIA tries to make. Um, and it's not going to come with a thirty-minute online course either. Um, it's got to be a more comprehensive uh, cultural competency training and uh, and greater engagement and listening to each other about their experiences and taking those learnings on board within the organisation. So, you know, I mean, I know a lot is expected, um, but I think it's had enough time to settle down and do its job, uh, the NDIA. And it's the proper administration of the NDIS to make sure all Australians who are eligible have that access and are able to utilise their plans effectively.
But you, you did mention, and um, coming from the point you've just made, Ms Turner, at one-one-eight of your statement, that cultural competence does not exist and only at an individual level through training, that is an organisational mindset. Does that include um, representation within NDIA itself for First Nations people and First Nations people with disability?
Yes. Um, and uh, I understand that, you know, it's not easy, but it would certainly uh, assist the organisation. And I believe that they do have Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander staff and um, but I'm just not sure how influential they are in the organisation when it comes to cultural competence of their colleagues.
Now, speaking of um, cultural competence, what are the impacts of cultural incompetence as it relates to the delivery of um, NDIS services and disability services?
Well, a complete lack of understanding of the circumstances that a person lives in, especially in very remote and remote areas, and the lack of uh, services that exist in those uh, communities, the lack of infrastructure. Um, you know, most of the remote communities have very poor infrastructure. And uh, and that's across the board, whether it's technological, you know, I T, uh, phone uh, access, or um, quite often, if we've got a clinic in a community, that will be the one place where we can sit down with our, our staff can assist a community member in contact with a third party and quite often have to interpret for them what the third party is talking about.
So, um, is it your evidence that cultural incompetence by where it exists but for NDIA staff affects access to the scheme?
Absolutely it does, absolutely it does. And I think that my colleagues uh, in the Kimberley will be able to give you, you know, more concrete examples about how plans are, appear to be um, uh, copied, uh, individuals' names are wrong, uh, and so on. So Ms Bedford and uh...
Yes. I, I will come to plan shortly, but just before I do, Ms Bedford and Ms Atchison, um, at seventy-two of your statement, um, you refer to the requirements of cultural awareness training for staff uh, within the Kimberley Consortium for every community that they service. And you compare the approach of one community to be like a white card for construction. Can you please tell the Commissioners about this particular community's approach and your views on whether or not that should be rolled out um, to other communities?
Sure. Um, in, uh, from July this year, um, it's now a requirement for any service provider seeking permission to enter and work in the remote Aboriginal community of Ardialoon, uh, or one on point on the Dampier Peninsula, uh, to complete a cultural induction course. Uh, the course itself uh, lasts for about thirty to forty-five minutes uh, uh, as an induction uh, to the cultural belief specific to that community, and it's delivered by community elders. Um, so i- it encourages uh, service providers to work in a culturally safe way while they're in Ardialoon community. Um, and it also helps service providers to navigate um, community and link in with appropriate people um, that can answer questions that they may have uh, about cultural issues within community. Um, so once the um, the training is completed, the person receives an accreditation card. Uh, they must have that card with them at all times while they're in community. Um, it's valid for twelve months, um, and after twelve months, a refresher course can be completed um, for the renewal of the cultural card. Um, this approach is a really good one, um, because it um, will ensure that any service provider entering that community understands the cultural um, the cultural uh, imperatives of working in Ardialoon community. It's community-led um, and delivered by uh, local community elders.
Thank you, Ms Bedford.
May I ask a question about uh, the, the role of Kimberley Supports within the Remote Community Connector Programme? I judge from your statement of paragraph thirty-three onwards and particularly paragraph thirty-eight through to forty-three, that y- your view is that the Remote Community Connector Programme is actually working well in the Kimberley? Have I, have I understood that correctly?
Yes, um, absolutely, it's working extremely well. Um, Commissioner, the strength of the programme is that you've got uh, Echos and Archos, so Aboriginal Community Controlled Organisations, and then Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Services, working in partnership to deliver the programme. You've got local Aboriginal people who live uh, in those specific communities, uh, working with um, their communities um, to connect them to the NDIS. And what we've seen uh, before the Kimberley Consortium was established was that there were only about fifty Aboriginal people in the Kimberley who had an NDIS package. And this was one of the major reasons why Kimberley Aboriginal leaders um, developed the consortium and the approach to the Remote Community Connector Programme, excuse me, the Evidence and Access and Coordination Programme. And in the last two years since the consortium was established, what we've seen with the Remote Community Connector Programme is that it's supported around five hundred and ninety-seven people. Um, and um, you know, it's still in its very early stages, uh, but we've had uh, five hundred and ninety-seven people uh, supported through the Remote Community Connector Programme. There have been um, three hundred and sixty-one access request forms um, lodged, and three hundred and nine uh, Kimberley Aboriginal people have had their access met in the Kimberley.
The evidence that you've just given, which I follow, um, is a little difficult to reconcile with some of the evidence we've heard this week. That rather suggests that the NDIS is not working in the Kimberley and is not fit for purpose. And I'm just trying to reconcile in my own mind your assessment of the success of the Community Connectors Programme with the other evidence we've heard about the Kimberley. Do, do you have any insights that can help me at least reconcile the evidence that we've heard?
I, I think that the, one of the things that um, is, is prevalent is that the Remote Community Programme is not in every community. So it's being delivered in towns where our Aboriginal Community Controlled Organisations, who are members of the consortium, are based, and also in remote communities where uh, uh, the Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Sector has clinics operating. Um, so uh, it hasn't had the opportunity to extend to all parts of the Kimberley. I think the other part is that um, there are challenges within our communities um, to promote and raise awareness around the NDIS. Um, cultural safety is an issue, and our, our teams are working extremely hard to get the messages out to our families around um, around uh, NDIS and the available services. Um, so we don't have full coverage of the, of the Kimberley as yet, um, but that's not to say that um, we couldn't, you know, look at that in the future if we're funded appropriately to do so.
Do you have presence in Fitzroy Crossing?
Uh, through um, uh, uh, Marman, uh, we do have um, we do have a presence there, but there's no Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Service as yet in Fitzroy Crossing. Um, we're working alongside the community in Fitzroy to develop a new Aboriginal uh, uh, primary healthcare service in Fitzroy. Um, so there's a lot of work to be done. Uh, and I think Emily Carter, in her evidence yesterday, spoke about the absence of a dedicated Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Service in Fitzroy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Excuse me, Commissioner, if I could add that um, BRAMs has been delivering some services to Fitzroy Crossing. We have around fifteen participants um, who we've been doing support coordination for. Um, and the reason that we're working outside the BRAM region is that there was actually the request, um, and participants contacted BRAMs directly and asked us to help deliver services to them in the absence of other uh, service providers.
Um, yes, thank you. Just the Community Connector Programme, just to, just to uh, clarify, the Women's Resource Centre in Fitzroy Crossing, do they run that programme?
Mani Wundukura?
Yes.
You're talking about Emily's organisation?
Yes.
Do they have the Community Connectors?
Yes.
Jenny?
Uh, uh, my understanding is that they do.
And do you know how long that they've been running that programme for?
Uh, the Kimberley Consortium has been in existence for about two years, and Maran's part of the consortium.
Okay.
I think if I might add, oh, sorry, Commissioner.
No, I'm sorry.
I, I might add, I mean, I... I, I might add, I mean, I saw some of the evidence given by, um, people from the Kimberley. And one was where a lady had to go to the dump to find parts for the wheelchair. So it's the appropriateness of what sort of wheelchairs in remote communities are most effective. And, you know, what people are able to get in their packages that will cover that. Um, and, uh, so I think that there are a lot of issues like that. It's, you know, it's an issue that I will be taking up, for example, with housing authorities under Closing the Gap, about building appropriate accommodation with the necessary, um, fixtures and design of the homes to accommodate, um, people who have to use wheelchairs or who have great mobility issues. But there are other issues like, you know, uh, a bedridden patient and having the lifts, uh, uh, to get them in and out of bed and into showers and things like that. Very limited availability of that sort of programme in remote communities. And, you know, I would have to wonder whether the houses were strong enough to be able to insert that sort of infrastructure, um, such as the lifts unless they were the portable ones, you know, that were mobile. Um, but I'm not sure whether Jenny or, um, Cassie are aware of any examples, uh, similar to that, uh, that's available to our families in the, in the Kimberley.
Hmm, because it seems to me that, uh, the model that we're talking about in the Kimberley, there's still that, uh, requirement to map locally what's needed um, with those local, uh, participants. Um, and there are limitations, as you talked about, around the Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Service in the Fitzroy. But there, it's identified and there are plans now, um, in train. Um, and we heard that evidence, um, around really practical helps failing. Um, and so there, there's, there's the evidence of, uh, the, the mapping and where the gaps are and what's needed. So I know it's an iterative process, um, but there's a structure to cre- to create, um, the solutions. This is what's very positive about this model.
Yes. Well, I would certainly agree with that. And I think that, you know, if the organisations were funded to do the mapping over and above what they're doing, because we've gone beyond, above and beyond the call of duty in relation to supporting our clients with disabilities and their families who are critical to the care of many of our people with disability.
Um, Ms, now one more question, because, um, Ms Turner was talking about the Aboriginal community control model and about, uh, First Nations people in the NDAI senior levels. But, uh, Aboriginal community control organisations, indeed health organisations, they are led by, uh, boards.
Yes.
Can you give us just, um, the, the value of a, an Aboriginal community control organisation, uh, member-elected board? And what that means for the local community around, uh, service improvement, but also in monitoring transparency, um, and the way that that community operates, uh, for its members?
So because the Aboriginal Community Controlled Health Service that are established by local communities and they have a formal governance process with an elected board and, uh, a report to members at the annual general meeting every year, along with the financial audited statements and any other, you know, information in their annual report about what they've been doing for the past twelve months and how things are going. That's an opportunity for community members directly, of course, to have an input and, uh, to give feedback as to, um, how they feel about the service delivery and what can be improved. And they certainly don't hold back. And the regular board meetings, uh, people are always, uh, being lobbied in the streets about particular services and how, you know, people want that to respond. And those issues are brought to the board table and to the attention of the CEO. Uh, and quite often, they are addressed as soon as it's raised within a board meeting context. So, you know, we are accountable to the communities where we operate. Um, and we take that very seriously, um, while respecting the cultural, um, protocols and, uh, um, ensuring good governance and meeting all the government requirements for accountability and, and the use of public funds, as well as, uh, having this cultural, uh, connect that is, uh, uh, respectful and, uh, um, and safe for our community to utilise.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms Turner, at Nacho's statement at sixty-three, um, it says that there is a failure, um, at a system level to recognise reputational risk of Achoes engaging with the NDIS. Can you please just explain to the commissioners what that means?
Well, there's a high reputational risk, uh, for Nacho, uh, and for our affiliates at the state and territory level and our Achoes, uh, to be associated with the NDIS. Um, NDIS itself is not culturally safe for our people. And the key reason, uh, people use our service is because we are trusted. And this is especially true in our remote areas. So, um, association with the NDIS, uh, when, with the NDIS risks undermining that trust. Um, and current processes within the NDIS make it difficult for our Achoes to deliver services to the highest standard, both they and their communities are accustomed to. And, uh, I mean, I could give an example, um, in terms of where it's very difficult for our people to access the scheme and our Achoes to support them, if you want.
Certainly.
So many Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people have significant, complex traumatic histories, which lead them to have chronic debilitating mental health conditions. Many have not had formal psychological assessments, but rather see the GP. This leads them down a more difficult path where they cannot apply for NDIS or DSP due to insufficient evidence or specialist support. Uh, there's also, there's, this is also further compounded by the larger burden of chronic disease they experienced at an early age. And, but again, they cannot apply for the DSP or NDIS as they are needing substantial specialist-supporting letters. And we've seen that, uh, arise in our services. And that was an example from Woo Chopron, Aboriginal health service in Cairns. But if I could ask Ms Bedford to elaborate from a CAMPS perspective?
Thank you. Um, some of the, um, reputational risks that we're, we're facing, um, so there are no local support coordinators in the Kimberley. Um, so any, um, NDIS participants given a, um, a support coordinator at the level two or three level. And those support coordinators, we know, are the gateway into accessing, um, uh, NDIS-funded disability services and mainstream community supports. These roles aren't based in the Kimberley, so they can be situated anywhere in Australia. Um, and they do a lot of their work, um, by phone. Um, and there's no requirement for cultural awareness training. Um, so, um, that presents a massive risk to us around, um, cultural safety. Um, the planning process also doesn't recognise the vast distances in the Kimberley. Um, and so those distances that, um, our staff are required to travel aren't recognised in the remuneration, um, that's offered within NDIS packages. Um, and so what happens as a result is that, um, uh, our community members who have a package, um, then don't get the best services because of the restrictions around travel. Um, we also see a, a, a risk around, um, support mechanisms for NDIS participants. Now, through the Kimberley, um, Consortium, we've developed key positions, um, which are, uh, identified roles that are, you know, uh, placed in community, based in community, but also work directly with our community. And they are the remote, uh, community connector roles and the family support worker roles. They, these types of roles need to be embedded across all planning activities to make sure that there's someone, um, that's sitting beh- beside participants, um, to make sure that the plans meet the expectations of the participant. Having a trusted person sitting alongside, um, a participant will make sure that those planning, planning meetings and the plans themselves actually meet the needs and the expectations of the participant.
Thank you, Ms Bedford. And I might just, um, stay with you for a moment, uh, to explore the last barrier relating to, you've heard evidence in this hearing about negative experience with government agencies. Um, can you share your observations of the impact of distrust, if it does exist, um, in your community as it relates to how people with disability in the Kimberley interact with the NDIS?
Yeah, so there's a couple of examples that I could give, um, and I'll, I'll go back to the access requirement. So when access isn't met, um, the NDAI's National, uh, Access Team often don't provide adequate feedback. Um, yes, they send a letter and yes, they quote the relevant, um, sections of the Act where disability, uh, sorry, where access wasn't met. Um, but oftentimes, um, you know, a, a phone call, um, to the Evidence and Access Coordinator could actually result in additional e- evidence being, um, gathered so that the participant can meet access. Um, and I'll, I'll use an example that we got from one of our member services. And, and this was a client of theirs that, um, that only had one arm and didn't, didn't meet access because there wasn't enough, uh, evidence to state, uh, when the loss of limb occurred. Um, so this information was really critical because, um, uh, the definitions around, um, uh, the significance of, of the, um, disability and, uh, really related to when, whether the person was born without a limb or whether they lost their limb in their twenties. You know, it's, it's a very different sort of state of play. Um, and that wasn't explained, um, to the participant. It was just a letter that came that quoted relevant sections of the Act. Um, and so the reputational risk for, uh, the Achoes themselves was that, um, there was a lot of distrust, not just of NDIS, but also of the Achoes themselves in terms of making this person go through a really, um, detailed and complex process, um, with no, no result. And it could have been alleviated by a phone call to say, hey, we need a little bit more evidence around this. Um, and, um, it could have, you know, been a very different outcome. Um, so there's some of the risks that we've sort of identified.
Thank you, Ms Bedford, and thank you for sharing that example. Um, I might move to you now, Ms Atchison. Um, firstly, are you seeing NDAI, uh, information or material to help participants understand the system being explained in culturally appropriate, um, ways?
No, um, we have very, um, little evidence to support that, um, the information is being communicated to our participants in a way that they can understand. Um, and we have lots of examples of where the information, um, and the planning process, um, isn't aligning to, um, the individual, um, their circumstances or the decisions or goals that they would like to make. Um, and that's reflected through the plans that people, uh, present to Brahms with.
And what about in traditional language? Have you ever seen NDIS information, um, translated or, or interpreted, um, in traditional language?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Now, I just want to move on to planning. Um, Ms Turner earlier had indicated underutilisation of plans. Um, from your perspective, Ms Atchison, on the ground, is that something that you're seeing with your, um, clients as well?
Yes, we are. So there's a mixture of, um, line items that we find people are utilising. And then there's other, um, line items in people's plans that aren't being utilised to their full capacity.
And I understand that Brahms has undertaken some auditing, um, in relation to plans. Can you tell the commissioners what you've done and what you've found?
Yep, so I'm just gonna go to my notes to make sure I've got the correct information here. Um, so Brahms is obviously an NDIS provider and a part of being a provider is we have compliance obligations, um, in respect to internal auditing. So, uh, every six months, we go through a process where we do an internal audit of all of our participants' files. And that includes reviewing and scrutinising the NDIS plans. Um, our most recent audit was undertaken in May and June. And what we found, um, was that sixty percent of our participants had duplicate goals on their plans. Um, so it looks and appears that some of the goals have been copied and pasted, um, and they don't reflect, uh, the individual. Um, and then furthermore, we found that ten percent of the files, um, ten percent of our participants with plans actually had names incorrectly recorded on them. So the participant's name at the start, um, and details were correct. And then as you get further down the plan, we found that, um, the NDAI have actually referred to other people or a different participant in that participant's plan.
Excellent. Um, Ms Turner, I wanted to, um, explore a paragraph of your statement now, and that's at paragraph sixty. Um, sorry, not of, where you quote in that statement from a submission to the Royal Commission. And you say this, "The, the need situation and culture of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people were not taken into consideration when developing the NDIS, resulting in a system that creates accessibility and service gaps at best and exploitation at worst for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. In what ways does Nacho consider exploitation has or may occur?"
Well, part of the problem is that, uh, the NDIS is structured as a business. And this is how the department first pitched it to me, uh, when they came to see me. "A great business opportunity," they said, "Pat, you can make a lot of money out of this and charge people to provide services for their plan, from their plans." But our model of care, uh, and the way our Achoes operate is to respond to the person and their families and do what's needed to get them to a better space. It's not about making profits. Any money, of course, that we do get in terms of Medicare revenue that, uh, uh, we earn is reinvested in the delivery of comprehensive primary healthcare, which is all embracing, as we have explained. So we don't accept and our services don't accept that the NDIS, uh, the NDIS as a money-making proposition. Uh, we're not interested in making money. We're interested in providing the right level of service at the right time to each person. And if our services make any money, as I said, we reinvest it into expanding our services to community. But for mainstream providers, they're focused on service delivery as a business, it appears. Which means cultural safety is viewed through a cost lens rather than being seen as critical to ensuring clients can access the support they need. Our observation is that little monitoring of cultural competency of existing providers for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people on pla- on plans occurs. And it's certainly not a compulsory KPI within the regulatory environment for providers. The current model devalues the rights of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people with a disability. And this permeates through the organisations who they are entrusted to support them. So that's been our observations and, uh, experience to date.
Thank you. Now, just before I move on to matters looking to the future, I just wanted to ask, and I might go to, um, perhaps Ms Bedford, what's your view in relation to funding family members to provide disability supports by the NDIS?
Look, I think a lot of our families are actually providing the, the support, um, through, um, our, uh, relationships and our cultural obligations. Um, you know, families will provide the support and not be paid for it. So from a CAMPS perspective, we're very supportive of that happening. I think there needs to be, um, greater supports embedded. Um, when we look at the, the, the model of care, we talk about a family and a person-centred approach. Um, so it makes sense to us that families are supported and are paid for the work that they're already doing.
What about Nacho, Ms Turner? What's their view on?
Absolutely, absolutely. Nacho supports family members who provide support to disabled, uh, people in their families. They have to be paid. This, their support is taken for granted. And so much of what they have to do is taken for granted. It's hard enough, um, living in poverty, as most people are reliant on income support, let alone have, uh, the additional work and effort that has to be put into caring for a person with disability, uh, in whatever form that comes. So... So it always falls back on the family. And there'll be, you know, particular people within the family that will fulfil that responsibility and that role. And they should be paid. It's a job. And it's got to be recognised as such, especially when we've got so many of our people reliant on income support.
Do you see any challenges with regards to the funding of family members by the NDIS?
I would think that the benefits would outweigh the negatives.
What are the negatives?
Well, it could cause jealousy among the family members whose one's getting paid and the other's not. But that shouldn't be a reason not to pay for the work being done.
There'd have to be rules, wouldn't there?
Well, you pay the person who's doing the work.
Yeah, but there have to be rules as to how much work they do, how much they're going to be paid, what accountability there is. And that creates the risk, doesn't it, of intervention by outside authorities, not necessarily First Nations authority?
Well, I'm sure that if people are on the payroll, they're answerable, you know, to their employers. There could be a system developed whereby they've got a network of staff who are family members with an organisation assisting them to do the proper, you know, time of hours worked, recorded and so on, and monitoring their support to make sure that they're coping and they're able to continue to provide that intimate support within the family.
Now, just moving on to issues of reform and change, Ms Turner, if I could ask you first, NACHO has set out 22 recommendations in their Capacity Building Report that was commissioned by the DSS, I understand.
Yes.
Has NACHO been consulted in relation to those recommendations or informed as to which, if any, are to be implemented in any formal or informal discussions?
Ms McMum, are we able to find those?
It's in the Capacity Building Report in the final pages of that report.
And that's tab.
You just give me one moment.
Yes, eighty-five, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, please, if you could.
So the NDIS Ready Programme was a result of the Capacity Building Report. That was done in 2019. The Department of Social Security cherry picked four recommendations out of the 22 to fund through the programme. NACHO has not been consulted about the remaining 18 recommendations and funding of these from either NDIS or DSS.
Thank you. Ms Bedford and Ms Atchison, and perhaps Ms Turner as well, is it fair to say that your organisations agree that it's critical that the NDIS must support flexibility, local solutions and building a First Nations workforce?
Well, I might go first, if that's all right.
Yes, an effective Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander workforce is essential to underpin strong community-controlled sector. And our Aboriginal health workers and health practitioners are the heart of our Archo workforce. And they are skilled, valued and trusted members of our teams and in local communities, and they have accredited training. Already, they are caring for clients with disability who in many cases are older Australians. This is especially true in remote settings where it is already difficult to find specialised workers. To effectively support growing demand, we need to leverage the current Archo workforce and draw from local communities to build the multidisciplinary care workforce that includes both cultural and clinical experts. So upskilling, retraining and utilising the existing workforce and creating workforce pathways to build capacity is the key to success. However, it must be remembered that Archo is the foremost comprehensive primary healthcare providers. In addition to frontline workers, we need to build the workforce capacity of our sector to become leading providers of NDIS services for our people.
Thank you, Ms Turner. Ms Bedford or Ms Atchison, are there any specific reforms that you would like to tell the commissioners, which are key to your services?
Can I just, if I could go first, I would just like to strongly agree with Ms Turner's comments. And just say that the Kimberley Consortium in developing our Kimberley Supports programmes right across the region use the Arches' model of care to frame the services, but also to ensure that our services are delivered in a culturally safe way. Critical to cultural safety is Aboriginal workforce. And what we see with our remote community connectors, with our Aboriginal health workers, with our family support workers, is that their lived experience and their intimate knowledge of communities make sure that they are able to walk alongside members of our community who are living with disability and frame the service delivery approaches to support our community living with disability. Investment is needed into the Arches and the Echo sector. And what we see where we're delivering services in thin markets is that the Echo and the Arches sector, as framed in the Kimberley Supports Consortium, needs to have its potential realised through long-term rolling funding contracts.
And I just wanted to ask you, Ms Bedford, and it's probably self-evident, but is it the case that many of the communities that you're working in have thin or failed markets?
Yeah, we, you know, in a lot of the remote communities that we have a, we have a presence, you know, the clinic is, you know, one of the only service providers that operate within community, you know, the fly-in, fly-out model, fly-in, fly-out model doesn't work in remotes because it doesn't allow service providers to develop relationships built on trust. We have to have service providers here in the Kimberley delivering services to our community. And that ensures that those services and programmes are culturally safe.
Thank you, Ms Bedford. And Ms Atchison, was there anything further that you would like to tell the commissioners this afternoon in terms of issues or recommendations?
I'd just like to add that the NDIS programme has made a significant difference for our participants in Broome. And it does come with its challenges. And I guess just from our journey, we started to be a registered provider in 2020. Our Board of Directors invested some of our own funds that we generated through our primary healthcare clinic to becoming a registered provider and to cover off start-off costs. And from our perspective, we've had a really, made a really good effort into delivering a really good NDIS programme. We employ 14 full-time staff. We have over 110 participants. But given all of the work that we do and everything else that we still don't operate in surplus, we actually operate in a deficit in our NDIS programme. And we put money into our NDIS programme to keep it operating. And that again is a commitment from our Board of Directors to fill that gap. But given how big the scheme is and all the different sort of modelling work, I think that further work does need to occur around the funding model, the price guide, the line items. Because currently there's sort of no flexibility in some of those line items. Whereas we find we need a level of flexibility and there's some things that we provide that are outside of that scope. So there are some strengths with the NDIS and it has been a really good programme. But there's further work that needs to be undertaken to encourage and empower Echoes to be able to deliver the service with our having to constantly worry about how we're going to cover costs for certain things in the organisation.
Thank you, Ms Atchison. And Ms Turner, just before, I want to ask you about the national closing, the GAP agreement. But before I do, I just wanted to ask, give you the opportunity for any particular recommendation or changes that you think should be made. If you could, please tell the commissioners.
Well, I think that further engagement between NDIS and our sector and recognition of the fact that we're subsidising the delivery of their programme and responsibilities. And we can't continue to do that. You know, we've got so many demands in terms of managing chronic patients and with multiple illnesses. And so many other areas because comprehensive primary healthcare enables our services to advocate across the board about the overall living conditions for our people. And to bring those, you know, facts to the attention of government to try and get an improvement in the living circumstances. And we just can't keep on subsidising these new programmes to ensure that they're getting the reach that they should. But the reach certainly needs to be improved. So there has to be cooperative work. We've run yarning circles. NACHO has organised for our people, our staff and who work in the field in these areas to come into a central location like they did in Darwin. We invited DSS and NDIS, NDI to come along and listen. And they were very grateful for the opportunity to hear firsthand from the people in the field about their experiences and how things could be improved. So that's been our initiative and it's something that we do very well. We're very conscious as a national body that we have constant interaction with our membership base. And so we know what's going on within each of our services around the country and what's important to them. So I'm hoping that there's a more productive relationship between NACHO and the NDIS. I'd like the Social Security and the NDI to sort out their roles and responsibilities. So, you know, we're not having to answer policy questions to this mob and then, you know, programme questions to that mob. They can sort out their own internal communications. Our job is to represent the interest of our clients, our people. And we need to negotiate much better funding arrangements.
Thank you. And as I said, just finally, I wanted to ask you, how could the national closing the GAP agreement be strengthened to improve outcomes for First Nations people with disability in remote and very remote communities?
Yeah, sure. Look, I think it's important to say when we're talking about Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, that you remember that our people have been learning and implementing cultural practices successfully and had highly functioning societies well before there was a Western construct of a department or a policy. The transference of power and resources to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander organisations and communities is required to enable our people to take the lead in decision-making and the design and delivery of programmes and services to meet our people's needs. Genuine partnership and self-determination need to be at the forefront when designing new policies and programmes and services to support the development of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to truly acknowledge us as the first peoples of this modern nation and to build on and recognise our strengths. The national agreement signals a new direction and is a commitment from all governments to fundamentally change the way they work with our communities, organisations and people. The government has got to give as much effort and investment to the national agreement in its first term as it does to the work it's doing on the Uluu Reis statement from the heart.
Thank you, Ms Turner. That completes the evidence unless there's any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, any questions?
Yes, Ms Turner, I was interested in the questions you flagged about the, about DSS and the NDI and the running of policy and the running of programmes and working that out. Can you give the commission example of what you've experienced or seen in relation to this situation?
Well, just where DSS is ringing up, asking us, you know, whether we've done a comprehensive assessment. No, you haven't funded us to do that. And so on. I mean, they should already know that, as far as I'm concerned, what we've been funded for and what we haven't been funded for. So there's been a bit of a scramble of late, I think, in DSS to catch up. Maybe with evidence that's coming out of the Royal Commission, I don't know. But generally, when you've got an agency, a statutory body like the NDI that has a particular remit to provide services to the Australian people who are eligible for those services. And you have a portfolio department that handles all the policy and advises the government directly. So there's just been a bit of confusion about who are we answering here of late with some of the questions that have come from the department? Or, you know, in the main, I think it's been from Social Security rather than NDI.
In the previous session, we heard from First Peoples Disability Network and the CEO Damian Griffiths often referred to power sharing. And you've mentioned in your evidence this afternoon, transfer of power. Can you give the commission a sense of what this word means? How it's, why it's being used now in relation to the NDI and the way that it's could potentially work better with First Nations organisations and leaders and the population, actually? What does that, what does it really mean? Because it's a word that hasn't been used in the commission in terms of hearings today. So I'm really interested in why it's being used in this context.
Well, you know, I was pretty cross that we weren't consulted in the first place about the NDIS and the special needs of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. And then to be approached by, you know, the Department of Social Security, senior officials from the NDI, senior officials from the Health Department and NIA coming into my office and say, we've got a profit-making proposal for you and your sector. And we know that you're the best placed sector to deliver on the NDIS. And you can make a lot of money out of this. And I said, no, that won't work. That's not the way we operate. That will not work. This is what will work. Is if you, you know, co-design the service delivery with us in genuine partnership. And we work out together, utilising our local services like CAMHS and Brahms as an example, to bring their expertise to the table and say, this will work in the Kimberley, this will work in the Pilbara, this will work in Central Australia, you know, and so on and so forth. I think that they're catching up now. They realise that consultation has to occur through us. And I'm pleased about that. But, you know, I'm not really in favour of too much consultation. I want to negotiate an outcome that is going to improve the life circumstances of our people. So we're interested in the implementation of the four priority reforms I spoke about earlier. And when I talk about the transference of power, I mean, you know, bureaucrats have a responsibility to deliver the programmes they administer. And those programmes are supposed to benefit everybody who is eligible for them. If our people are eligible for them, they shouldn't have to jump through hurdles, as many hurdles as we have had to, to get access to these programmes. We've got to make it as smooth and as accessible as possible. And we know all the extras that you've got to put in to get that access. But it's important that our people do have that access. Therefore, the power sharing that Damian referred to or the transference of power has to occur in those. Has to occur in those negotiations between the NDIA and say, for example, NACHO. Because we'll bring our members in and we'll have a fully informed view. As and work through overcoming the barriers and to get a much better outcome. For the daily lives of our people on the ground. Even things like, you know, how do we get more. Prompt repair of wheelchairs in remote areas. You know, we've got to think about practical. Practical barriers that our people are facing every day and how do I overcome them? And we're capable of doing that if we're given the time and the respect of the engagement. And of course, you know, a fair share of the budget. To deliver services in a very high cost environment in remote and very remote.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKeown?
Thank you. I wanted to ask either or all of you about technology. You made the point earlier that. Platform like video conferencing, Zoom and so forth cannot replace the critical importance of face to face. Putting that to one side. What investment would you consider important to improve the way you do your work when we consider things like? Telehealth and other emerging, I suppose, techno, you know, tech. Technology based solution. Is there anything that would help you in particular in the work you do in remote communities?
I'll answer that and then I'll go to Jenny, if that's all right. So we use telehealth during COVID. And we had to talk to the bandwidth providers to broaden the bandwidth to enable us to have the access because of the poor access. For telecommunications in remote areas. So we did that ourselves and and we utilized telehealth very effectively. During COVID. There are some mechanisms now that are being adopted by CAMHS and I can get Jenny to explain them. With the NDIS, it's a bit more complicated, I think. But I'll ask Jenny to give her views first. And if I need to, I'll add after Jenny.
Thank you. Look, I think face to face is always the preference. But as as Pat mentioned, what we saw during COVID was an increase in telehealth consultations. And they seem to work pretty well. Community seemed very comfortable. Using telehealth as a means to see doctors that were broom based, but also. You know, saving a trip down to the city for specialist appointments. The challenge that we have is that in some remote communities, they don't have access to. The internet. So Belgo community, for example, has only got access to 3G. Whereas the other two communities in the Kujunka region, the other two desert communities of. Billaluna and Mullen have access to 4G. So in terms of, you know, the delivery of primary healthcare and emergency care in particular. We really struggle to increase our emergency telehealth service, for instance, in Belgo. Because we don't have access to, you know, the 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 necessary internet which would support that.
Ms Akshin Jin, did you want to add anything to my question?
I would support Pat and Jenny's comments about telehealth. And specifically last year, Brahms had a telehealth project which was for primary healthcare, but it should be. Noted that telehealth, even when we do a telehealth consultation, we still have an Aboriginal health worker. With a patient to engage over the telehealth. So although telehealth concept is really good, you still actually need to attach. A local person with the individual so that they can help the person feel comfortable, they can help interpret. And those sorts of things. So if they're thinking about the infrastructure from an IT perspective, that that is good. Because there's sometimes where services can't come up, like specialist services and things like that. But you still need to have that that face to face person to help the individual navigate the telehealth process.
Thank you, all of you, and thank you for the important work you're doing for your community. Thank you.
Turner, much of what we've been talking about this week and much of what we've been talking about during this session. Involves resources and support from presumably the Commonwealth and maybe states and territories. In the document that. NACHO produced core services and outcomes framework.
Yes.
Page three, it talks about the revenue sources for archers. Saying they're diverse, including block grants from health, Medicare billings and so forth. Where does one find a comprehensive analysis of data of sources of finance and what the expenses are? Is there is there a consolidated set of accounts for all nachos or is each nacho? Does it produce separate financial statements?
Yes.
They each produce separate financial statements?
One hundred and forty five Aboriginal community controlled health services funded funded directly. By the Commonwealth Department of Health. They're all legally incorporated organizations. And they all have to produce an audited financial return. And so that would be held by the corporate governance body as well as the department. There was a bit of a scare for me anyway, a couple of years ago, when the Department of Finance. Wasn't going to require audited financial statements from organizations anymore. And we certainly raised our concerns with them and the Commonwealth Department of Health. Because in my experience. Checking the audited financial returns is an early warning sign if there are problems starting to emerge in an organization. So I've always regarded it as a safeguard to have that in place, but every archer is funded individually. The Commonwealth Department of Health, the Indigenous Health Program would have a record of. The revenue that they provide. In some instances, you will have input from state governments, but you know. That is. That has not been the norm, only when they want something particular done. And although Victoria seems to be extraordinarily generous. The Victorian government, I can't say the rest, the same for the rest of them. And. Yeah, so that's and you know.
So does that does that mean that each nacho makes an individual application to the relevant funding body?
Yes.
So there are a hundred and fifty odd applications?
Hundred and forty five.
Hundred and forty five.
Funding agreements.
Each individually assessed?
Yes.
Presumably.
Yes.
And what's your role in determining if any, if there is any role in determining. Allocation among nachos, presumably nachos, no role?
No.
And so you you get funding for, as it were, the national activities directly directly to you?
That's right. So what we get funded for is our core business, which is to support our membership base. And to encourage, you know. The development of full comprehensive primary healthcare service delivery to our people. To encourage good quality control. We've developed the core services framework, which we're now costing with our members. That will give us, because we've been having this funding needs debate with the department since I've been at NACHO. We had a major breakthrough with the four year rolling funding this year. But we need to get needs based funding. And we've just recently commissioned a report from Equity Economics. That showed that the funding for the Aboriginal community controlled health sector is $4.4 billion underfunded. Two point eight of that comes from the Commonwealth and 1.6 from the states and territories. It should be contributing, given the level of chronic disease that we carry. And and the service. And the funding that's provided for mainstream primary healthcare compared to us. There's a $5,000 gap per head.
Thank you very much. I'll just pause for a moment to see if there is any application to ask any questions. Normally the pause is very brief, as it is in this instance. In that case, thank you very much, everybody, for giving your evidence and for your contributions in writing. And also I echo the comments of Commissioner Mason and Commissioner McKeown. Thanking you for the work that you do in in particular. In the remote areas that we're concerned with in this hearing. So thank you very much. We very much appreciate your. Contributions to the work of the Royal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you.
Chair, council assisting would be assisted by a five minute break.
Yes. Well, it's now nearly or ten past, so let's be generous and come back at twenty past, shall we?
Thank you, Chair.
And we're going to start with the the panel from the Commonwealth.
That's right.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. Silence, please. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Mr Griffin?
Commissioners, I call Scott MacNorton and Ketsa Papadopoulos to give evidence. Both are present in the witness area. Commissioners, can I indicate that? A statement from. Miss Papadopoulos. Date of the fourteenth of June, two thousand and twenty two. Appears in hearing bundle B, tab eighteen. And associated documents in hearing bundle B, tabs nineteen to thirty. For the record, the statement is the identification number S T A T dot zero five five two dot. Double zero one, double zero one. Mr MacNorton has also provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the fifteenth of June, two thousand and twenty two. Appearing at hearing bundle B, tab one. With associated documents in hearing bundle B, tabs two to seventeen. For the record, the identification number is S T A T zero double five three triple zero one, triple zero two. As you're aware, Chair, witnesses will be giving joint evidence and how so they'd be sworn to make an affirmation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr MacNorton, for returning to the Royal Commission. I'm sure you very much enjoy your repeated journeys to the Royal Commission. Ms Papadopoulos, thank you too for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. Thank you both for the detailed statements that we have received. If you will be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate located around the corner there. She will administer the author affirmation as the case may be.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you both solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give? Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you, Mr MacNorton. Thank you, Ms Papadopoulos. And now I'll ask Mr Griffin to ask you some questions.
Mr MacNorton and Ms Papadopoulos, do you mind if from time to time I refer to you by your first names?
That's fine by me.
And can I indicate my approach to asking you questions? We'll try and nominate who the question is directed to. But on the basis that if the other person wishes to add further comment or an answer, please feel free to do so. But don't wait for me to come back and ask individually the same question. Firstly, Ms Papadopoulos. This is the first time you've provided evidence to the Royal Commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
And as I mentioned, you've provided a statement. Is that statement true and correct to the best of your ability?
Yes, it is.
And Mr MacNorton, as the Chair just indicated, you're a frequent flyer before this Royal Commission. In respect to your statement, is that true and correct?
Yes, it is.
Can I come to you first, Ms Papadopoulos? You say in your statement at paragraph nine that you're the branch manager of market intervention and commissioning for the NDIA. What does this job involve?
The market intervention and commissioning branch is part of Provider and Markets Division at the NDIA. The division is responsible for the market stewardship of the NDIS market. To ensure that there is effective supply of supports for people receiving NDIS plans. My branch in particular looks after a few areas. One of the areas that we're responsible for is market development projects. So we monitor markets across the NDIA on a geographical basis. And we identify markets where it appears that participants are not. Receiving the supports that they need. Which might be because of low supply or it could be because of other issues in that particular place. We prioritize markets for what we call market intervention. Which is a process of of going in and understanding the issues that might be at play in that particular place. And designing a response and implementing a response to lift. Utilization of plans and ensure that people are receiving the supports that they need. In addition to that, I lead market stewardship of the support coordination market. So that that means that I monitor the the overall support coordination market in Australia. And I also lead market stewardship of the plan management market.
How long have you been in your current role?
Close to two years now.
And what relevant experience and qualifications did you bring to your current job?
So I have a Bachelor in Economics, Social Science with Honors and Master of Business Administration. I've worked in state government in New South Wales for most of my career, a long, long time in New South Wales Treasury. I'm mainly working through customer focused service delivery. Type of work, also in regulatory reform. After New South Wales Treasury, I worked in the Department of Communities and Justice in New South Wales. And for quite a few years, I had a focus on commissioning of services. Which which really means how can we drive a more customer focused approach to service delivery in government?
Mr MacNorton, can I ask you similar questions? Can you briefly outline your current position and what that entails?
Yeah, sure. My current role is the General Manager of our National Service Delivery Division. So I look after all of the State and Territory Office networks. I also look after our access and eligibility branch, as well as our complex support needs branch. And I also have responsibility for our connector program.
And how long have you been in this position?
Approximately two and a half years as well, coming up, coming up just just over two and a half years.
Were you at the NDIA prior to this position in another role?
Yes, I was. I've been in the NDIA for approximately eight years. And have undertaken various roles at both a branch manager level and now a general manager level.
Very briefly, in terms of qualifications and experience prior to joining the NDIA, what did you do?
Academically, I have a Masters of Business and also a Masters of Public Administration. Prior to joining the NDIA, I was with other Commonwealth agencies and departments such as Services Australia, Department of Social Services. Family Community Services and Indigenous Affairs.
Ms Papadopoulos, paragraph forty of your statement, you provide an overview of what's called the modified Monish model. And that's the map they brought up on screen. Indicating that there is categories under that model. Do you have that map on your screen which is in your statement?
Yes.
You'll see that there are different colors on the national map. Broadly speaking, are there seven categories under the Monish model from one to seven?
That's correct.
And is category six a remote area?
Yes.
And category seven is a very remote area?
Yes.
In terms of that map, the light of yellow color. In terms of that map, the light of yellow colour is a category seven?
That's correct.
And the grey area, which is either in the middle of that colour or on its perimeter, is category six?
Correct.
Do you know how many communities in total within very remote and remote area the N D I S deals with?
I think it's between one hundred and two hundred, but I'm not quite sure of the exact figure.
And in your time at the N D I A, have you visited any very remote community?
No, I haven't.
Have you visited a remote community?
I have in my previous roles.
What was the extent of your visitation of remote communities in the previous roles?
It was in my role at the Department of Communities and Justice in New South Wales, and I visited Broken Hill and Willcanna.
But you haven't visited a remote community as a result of your current employment with the N D I A?
No, unfortunately, travel's been hard during Covid.
And, Mr. McNorton, can I ask you a similar question? In your time at the N D I A, have you visited any very remote communities?
Yes, I have, councillor. I had the fortunate opportunity to visit quite a few communities. Palm Island in East Dunamane, I've been to Galawinku, Yorclaw, Nullanderry. I've been out to Hermansburg up in the central west. Stretching my mind here, some others in south Australia, Yalata, Yaraba out of Cairns. A few. Can I just say, mainly I've visited as a visitor daily. I haven't lived or immersed myself in those communities, but I have visited many and had the privilege to do them.
You preempted my next question.
Sorry.
When's the last occasion you visited a very remote community?
Pre-Covid, obviously, unfortunately, my last, and that was a trip out to Hermansburg. And before that, I was in Palm Island in May two thousand and twenty-one, in the middle of lockdowns.
Can I ask you both in turn, have you had the opportunity to read the statements of the witnesses that have given evidence in this public hearing this week?
Yes.
Yes, I have, and I've been here for most of the hearings, so I've been able to hear them firsthand, which has been really insightful.
I can tell you, it's been before the Royal Commission before, Mr. McNorton, because once again, that was my next question. You've either been here in person or otherwise followed the evidence this week?
Yes, I have arrived Monday.
And Miss Papadopoulos?
I arrived on Wednesday afternoon and have been, yeah, watching the hearings since then.
Miss Papadopoulos, at paragraph eighty-six of, oh, sorry, Mr. McNorton, at paragraph eighty-six of your statement, you say that all staff and N D I S partners are required to complete a mandatory e-learning module called Celebrating Diversity First Nations Cultures. Firstly, can I understand what is meant by the term N D I S partners?
They're our local area coordinator partners and our early childhood partners.
And can you describe briefly to the commissioners what that educational module which I just referred to involves?
It's a online learning module. It's based on an introductory module into cultural competency, cultural awareness, it's often referred to also. It's built on the back of the S B S program and contains a lot of insightful videos around the history of First Nations people since colonization, goes through the stolen generation, the impacts of those, and the consequential impacts that many First Nations people have suffered. They're very insightful videos. And then it talks about, it's got, the videos have a whole series of interviews with First Nations people and their own experiences in community, at work, at sport. And, yeah, so it's a good program. I think as Pat Turner said earlier, you don't do a forty-five-minute e-learning program and you become culturally competent. And we all certainly agree with that, but it is a really good first introductory learning activity for all of our staff.
And do I take it that all staff of the N D I A are required to undertake that education in that module?
Yes, it's what we, we have a series of e-learning modules. Some are mandatory and some are non-mandatory. And we make that one, like many others, mandatory.
I appreciate your observation that, in my words, it's a first step. Do you, within that module, have a way of testing the understanding of the people that have viewed it?
Well, the actual e-learning itself has an online survey at the end that you have to complete to successfully pass it. But, so that's the way in which you self, you self-identify that you've been able to pass that as an e-learning concept. Other than that, there isn't any follow-up necessarily that we do specifically around that.
What happened to the ten point five percent of staff that haven't done the compulsory course?
Chair, they're the ones that we continue to chase down to make sure they do.
What do you threaten them with?
We just try and encourage them strongly that they should do it within a reasonable time.
So, it's sort of semi-compulsory.
Well, it is something I go back to, well, the agency goes back to all their managers and we, there was a range of other mandatory learnings that we also get them to do.
It's not a huge commitment in time.
Well, as I said, it's the start. It's the start. It's actually quite a new product and we've, we have been thinking about what's, what's next and what might be more of a curriculum that's more role-specific for people. So, for our remote planners who are out in community all the time, we expect a higher level of cultural competency. So, what's the next level of curriculum for people in those roles in the agency? This is someone who might be in an enabling team or a corporate team who may have less involvement with First Nations people or communities.
So, if somebody was in a back room in Geelong doing data processing as a purely clerical job, there would be less urgency in your mind to make sure they had undertaken the work?
What we would like them to do is complete the mandatory module. And part of what the mandatory module does is essentially hopefully started journey, a learning journey that individuals will continue to self-service and knowledge, and that's, that's a really important flavour for it as well.
How does the N D I A satisfy itself that the partners referred to in the statement have also undertaken that training?
So, as part of the partner in the community contracts, any mandatory training, whether that be an e-learning or on face-to-face delivered project, the partners have to report their progress against the completion of that. And our contract managers follow that up with the partners.
You also indicate in your statement, Mr. McNorton, that you have a role of Indigenous champion within the organisation. Am I correct in understanding that in order to be eligible to assume that role, you have to be at a certain level of seniority within the organisation?
And, councillor, we have three champion roles in the agency. We have the Indigenous champion. We have a discipline inclusion champion, and we have the L G B I T A Q plus champion. They're all S E S or Senior Executive Service levels to do that role. And primarily, that's to give the role a sense of, I guess, status importance. It brings with it other activities on top of my general manager role, so I'll champion our NAdot Week activities and National Reconciliation Week activities. It also allows me, within my general manager role and with my S E S colleagues, to be able to champion their cultural awareness and inclusion within their groups.
And your role extends beyond within the N D I A. It also involves dealing with other agencies and organisations in an almost a network of such people. Is that right?
That's correct. There's a, there's a network of Indigenous champions across Australian public sector agencies.
Someone who hadn't had the benefit of that explanation might ask the obvious question. Why isn't an Indigenous person in that role?
It's a very good question. When I was first asked to take the role on two and a half years ago, I thought long and hard about it, given I'm, I don't, I'm not Indigenous. I don't identify as being Indigenous. We don't, and we didn't at the time have any senior executives who identified as First Nations in the agency. I was asked to do it because of my role in managing service delivery in the connectors branch. But also, I have some background and quite a lot of interest in Indigenous affairs. So, it was a bit of a passion for mine as well.
Does the N D I A have any process in place at the moment to try and encourage the representation of First Nations people in senior management of the organisation?
It's an area that we need to do more in. We've, we've got a strong First Nation employment program for non-S E S levels. And in fact, we're about to announce our new strategy that's been developed, co-developed by our First Nation Employee Network. But at this stage, we haven't successfully been able to recruit recently any First Nations people into senior roles. But it is something that our executive team are looking very hard and deeply.
Doesn't quite answer the question I think I was asking. Do you have a process in place to try and get First Nations people into senior management?
Do you mean identified measures like, and specific roles?
I'll give you a particular example. You can endeavour to achieve more diversity simply by advertising and seeing who makes application. You can also endeavour to do it by trying to identify and target people you believe might be of great use to your organisation with sufficient support and training to achieve senior management level. Given those sort of spectrum of approaches, I understand you to say you're keen to have more diversity. My question is, what are you actually doing to achieve it?
It is definitely an area that we have to probably do some more targeted recruitment to, as you suggest. We recently did that as part of an affirmative message position for our inclusion, disability inclusion champion, where it's an identified role that the person had to be a person with disability. So, it is something we've done recently in other roles. It's clearly an area that we need to do more in to get more senior people in as First Nations executives.
Before I leave this topic, has the N D I A considered removing the barrier of S E S status in order to get a First Nations person into that champion role? In other words, it could be someone at a lower level of the organisation in terms of its structure?
Yes, we have. In fact, we've, we've got two or three incredibly strong, passionate and intelligent First Nations people coming through our ranks at the executive level too, or the director level, who I think are very, very close to it, to being able to take that mantle, but actually to, to grow through the agency and become S E S officers in their own rights anyway. So, there are some fantastic people coming through the ranks that I think are very close to that.
Is the L G B T Q I champion, does that person identify as so?
Yes, they do.
It would be a bit silly, wouldn't it, to have somebody as an L G B T Q I champion who didn't identify as so?
Yes.
Sounds a bit silly to have a First Nations champion who's not First Nations. This is not directed at you. Your answer suggested that the limitations on the process were it had to be a senior person. Why? Isn't it more important, and this is not directed at your qualifications, but isn't it more important to have a person who fits the bill?
Yeah, a chair. In fact, just last week when I did a presentation at NAdot Week, I said my role is to do myself out of this role and to see one of the First Nations people take it over very soon. And it won't stop me being a champion. It will just continue.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting it should.
And I mean that as a, as a role, but yes.
In listening to or viewing the evidence and witnesses this week, do you accept an overarching proposition that for people of First Nations background in remote, very remote communities, that the N D I S systems and processes are complex?
I think certainly what we've heard throughout the course of the week is that there is a need for more flexibility. There is a need to make the scheme easy to understand and the need to make the scheme more community-led. And, and I thought the presentations from CAMHS and BRAMs recently and how they're working with their local community to do that is a, is a great flagship across the country of how that's being done. So, certainly, there is more to be done to make it more flexible and easy to understand. I actually accept that through the week's evidence.
I wonder whether you accept my proposition that the system and processes for those groups are complex?
We also have to be mindful, I guess, that what the scheme has been able to deliver over the last three or four years.
So, is that an answer, yes, comma, but?
It is a yes, comma, but. But because I think, Chair, it's important to say whilst there are some complexities, there has been a lot of good work over the last few years. And we've seen that with our remote community connector network. We've seen that with the growth of the number of First Nations people joining the scheme and getting supports for the first time in their lives.
I'm not questioning that at all, Mr. McNorton, but I'm trying to focus on the fundamental principle that, in my words, a theme of a lot of the lived experience witnesses from those communities was that they didn't understand what it was all about. Hence, my suggestion, the scheme and its processes are for those people complex.
I think there is more to be done to make it easier for people to understand how the scheme works, how they can use their plans more flexibly. And some of the infrastructure that has been put in place needs to be reviewed to make it more culturally appropriate and to remote.
Mr. McNorton, I do think the question was pretty clear and straightforward. Do you agree with council's proposition that the scheme and its processes are for those people complex?
And I think, Chair, I've agreed that more needs to be done to simplify.
No, no. Could you answer the question, please?
I think what we've heard this week that there are elements that is complex for some people to understand, and there's more to be done to make it more simple.
I want to come to you, Miss Papadopoulos, if I could, on the question of fin markets. As councillor assisting, we accept the identification of a fin market can be a complex economic exercise. Do you agree with that?
I'm not sure what you mean. Identifying it as a complex economic exercise.
Well, in order to examine a market and determine whether it comes within the concept of a fin market requires some degree of sophisticated analysis, does it not?
There is a lot of data analysis involved and a lot of qualitative analysis as well. So, some background in markets, yes, is helpful for that.
And hence, my question is yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you accept that the basic proposition that a fin market refers to a situation where people's needs are not being met because of a lack of availability of services?
I think that's, yes, that's one explanation of a thin market.
Now, I appreciate in your statement you go into much more detail, and we thank you for that. But I was just trying to get a working definition that people listening to this hearing could understand without any specialist background.
Yes, certainly. So, I, I avoid the term myself, thin market. But it is an established term that has been used in a lot of the material around the N D I S. I heard a witness earlier say it's, it's a negative term. And it kind of suggests, why would someone want to come and work in that market if it's a thin market? So, my team and I tend to use terms such as underdeveloped markets or struggling markets or markets where there are gaps. And so, our analysis in identifying the markets that we want to prioritise and we think we'd like to send our team into, we base those decisions on where we see participants' needs not, not being met.
Indeed, to use the term struggling or gaps would on its face appear to be far more expressive of what you're talking about.
Yes, is that, are you saying that that's a better way of describing?
I'm suggesting to you that the terms that you've said you prefer to use are indeed much more expressive about the concept you're talking about.
I think so.
It's actually a term that's been imported from economic analysis, one way or another.
Yeah.
One of the witnesses during the week said they didn't like the term markets for reasons they gave. But one of the reasons for not using a term like thin markets is that it doesn't in any way convey the real problem. The real problem's very simple. There's nobody there to provide the services that people want and need. Whether you describe that as thin markets, absence of service providers, gaps in the NDIS, a fault in the structure of the NDIS, but whatever it is, thin markets doesn't convey it, does it?
The NDIS yeah relies on healthy markets for people to receive the services they need. Um, and so, yes, you're right. Where we see people not receiving services, a a lot of that comes down to supply of providers not being available. However, when we analyse what's happening in these markets, we look at demand side as well. So we go, um, we look at the particular participants in that place. We analyse their plans very carefully. We work with their support coordinators and the people around them to understand their personal circumstances. And so what what we see is where you have um participants who don't understand the NDIS in the first place, who don't understand how to use their plan, who have personal circumstances that make other things in their life a higher priority than accessing disability supports, that demand is not being expressed in the market. So it's not visible and an opportunity is not being seen by providers to to net to enter that market potentially. So a lot of the work we do is called market facilitation and it and it's about trying to systematically address both those issues on the demand side as well as looking at what is preventing um providers from offering services in those markets.
That's a good question. Um, the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander community control sector um started well before the sixty-seven referendum. But they became a mechanism for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people and their communities to have access to resources and funds. And the primary approach has been through community development. And even today with the evidence from Macho and further leaders from the Kimberley, those those models are driven not not from looking at market opportunities. It's actually by looking at it um from a community development perspective. I'm just interested to know if if community development is missing in the way that the lens is put over First Nations communities and families and individuals, or is it seen from a market perspective? Because I've not heard that term in the NDIS, the approach of community development.
Yes, um, they're, in my team, our responsibility is around markets. However, as I've talked about, we, when we go into a market, which is really a place, we we get to know the the people, the participants, the providers and everybody in that network and understand what's going on in that place. My team has levers that pertain to markets. We call them levers. We have things we can do that pertain to markets. We can work with the provider side. We can share data. We can encourage people. We can create networks. We can, we we then um have a look at the participant side. We work with teams such as Remote Community Connectors and Remote Planners and and a community engagement and other teams also within the NDIA. Then to try to bring a more holistic approach and to help those teams um contribute to the project and address the range of issues that might be going on in that place. What we've learnt is um it um I think we could do better as to to bolster that approach and um to to work yet more closely with all those other teams um so that we're all individually contributing to um to change and improvement in those markets. So we are learning and um and it's it's quite definitely causing us to have some conversations about, as you said, community development and a whole of community approach.
Because in that answer, I'm listening for community development principles or um um experiences. And it's it's not there. Um, when we you're in an environment here in Allo Springs where there's many, many languages being spoken, First Nations languages, and Scott's got you understand this. Um, and a term that um I quickly learnt about when I came here to Central Australia was listening to people who could speak five, six languages, is the ability to code-switch. So someone who can, who's talking to someone in English and they see someone coming to them and they might be a First Nations Walpuy language speaker or an Arundel language speaker, and they code-switch to that language. And it then it feels like in your response that that code-switch is not there in the NDIA around community development as a ground-up approach, which is the natural um way leadership happens in the First Nations community control sector. It's a community development approach. Because we heard the examples from First People's Disability Network around looking at community development overseas countries. There's that natural leading towards that approach. So um it's that uh, I'll I'll leave it there. I'm taking time here. But um I've not made that connection until you started talking about and the chair's questions around thin markets. And it might be something of uh some more unpacking around the language because the fearfulness that Aboriginal people have towards the NDIA is that the language or the code-switching is not community development. It's thinking about markets and demand, supplies, supply chains. So thank, thank you, Mr Griffin.
If I may say so, I think the very important point being made by Commissioner Mason is that community development has nothing necessarily to do with markets at all. I think that's the point. Of course, you've got to have resourcing, of course, and it'll normally be governments one way or another. But if you want to develop a community, there are no doubt a variety of ways in which that can be done, depending upon the characteristics of the community. But if what you want to do is to harness the culture, the wisdom, the experience um of a community, doing it by a process of engaging with and co-designing, if you like, with that community, may have absolutely nothing to do with the market. It may just be a question of funding an organisation that's got the requisite experience, skill, empathy, cultural affiliation and providing the resources to do so. I think that's, as far as I can work it out, that's the uh dissonance that we've been hearing during the week. But anyway, that's a, just a thought. Carry on.
Ms Papadopoulos, you may recall that Ms Beth Walker, the public guardian to the Northern Territory, gave evidence earlier this week, and she drew a distinction between a thin market and market failure. That's a well-recognised distinction, isn't it?
Uh, a market failure in economics has a very, very narrow definition.
What's the definition for an economist of a market failure?
Um, I I think there are three, three particular situations where it can arise. Um, but it's it's associated with public goods. So that is one, like, it's it can get quite technical. Um, I used to have the Productivity Commission definition stuck up on my on my wall when I was in Treasury. But um public goods, for example, such as electricity are not um and would not be economical to be provided through a natural market because they're a natural monopoly. Therefore, it's a market failure. Therefore, you um you, the the government or the community provides something like electricity in a in a different way. Um, pollution, I think, is another example of a market failure.
But if there's been a complete market failure, you're dealing with a much more complex problem than a thin market in terms of the options available to you.
Yeah, that's correct.
Chair, I know the time and I'm intending to move on to another topic.
Flying by, Mr Griffin. Um, perhaps given when we started, we could continue for a little while. Is that what you had in mind?
Yes, in your head.
As long as the staff doesn't show signs of rebellion, let's continue.
I don't know how one identifies that, but anyway. Um, in your statement, Ms Papadopoulos, at paragraph twenty-four to twenty-six, you explain that the thin market trials that have been initiated by the NDIA. I understand that they arose at a a meeting of ministers in two thousand and nineteen, in particular?
The decision to undertake trials, yes.
And the ministers, as I understand, agreed that a more flexible approach, including targeted market interventions, were needed to address certain market gaps.
Yes.
Have you read or are you aware of the two thousand and eleven Productivity Commission Report entitled Disability Care and Support?
Was that the original Productivity Commission Report that argued for the NDIS?
Indeed, it was.
Yes, I read it.
The Product Commission Report does not appear in the hearing bundle. It comprises two volumes of approximately six hundred pages. It is accessible online, commissioners, but for purposes of my questions, it seemed that there were three primary conclusions in that two thousand and eleven Productivity Commission Report. And they were firstly that disability support services in remote communities were either non-existent or limited to basic care and allied health programmes. The second principal finding seemed to be that those services cannot provide adequate support for people with complex needs. And thirdly, they concluded it was highly unlikely that any disability service would exist in remote communities in the absence of block funding. Let's assume for purpose of my um questions that that's a reasonably accurate summary of the list of those findings. Did you understand that that was one of the documents which led to the creation of the disability scheme?
Yes.
And can I assume that when the scheme was established, those problems identified or characteristics identified by the Productive Commission were still relevant and present?
I I assume they were and I, the, I guess, are you um are you concluding that that they weren't taken into account properly with with the design of the scheme?
Tell the commissioners what is meant by the term block funding.
Uh, block funding is a way of uh funding uh usually a non-government organisation to provide uh services to the community. Um, it refers to um to usually a contracted arrangement for um a number of years or a period of time. Um, and the the funding uh is attached to certain um deliverables um or or outcomes.
So does block funding provide a precise amount of money and some security that that funding will be available for a designated period of time?
Yes.
How prevalent is block funding within the scheme today?
Uh, the scheme is largely a model of individualised funding through plans. However, uh, the NDIS uh model of individualised funding is complemented by a range of block-funded programmes. Remote Community Connectors is one example, E A C P, the REX programme. We also have I L C grants um and state and territory government programmes as well. So all of those block-funded programmes wrap around individualised funding um and are there to complement and support um the operation of the NDIS.
Are you or Mr McNorton able to give a ballpark figure of what percentage of total funding can be characterised as block funding?
Very minimal.
Um, I can, no, not as a percentage, but I can, I can tell you, um, counsel, that we spend around twenty-three million dollars a year in funding for Remote Community Connectors, evidence access and coordination of planning and remote early childhood grants. Um, the I L C grants um are managed by the Department of Social Services now, but they were four or five hundred million dollars. Um, um, previously, I don't know what they are exactly now.
Can I ask you and those that advise you to take on notice that question to see if you can provide a more precise answer? And there's no criticism in that comment.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Would you mind explaining um briefly, if you can, how the block funding for the Community Connectors Programme works? Um, where does the money come from? Who gets it pursuant to what authority?
I'll take that, Chair. Um, yeah, so we have a series of individualised contracts with um, they're usually all um Archos or Aboriginal Medical Services across the country. There's about forty or fifty head contracts and they cover around about three hundred and nine remote communities across the country. Um, it it started uh with a bit of a trial in in East Dunhamland and then up to the Kimberley uh as as a way of, I think the first nature was a disability navigator to help people understand the NDIS in local language. Um, and it proved incredibly successful. And so now we continue that grant programme. Um, we've moved from annual grants to two or three-year grants now to try and lock in some assurity for workforce. Um, and we're still expanding. We're just about to announce, um, I won't now announce it here, but we're about to announce a contract up in the Torres Strait and Far North Queensland for an extension of the Early Childhood Programme up there as well. So it's something we we continue to do.
So that these are funds that are provided to individual organisations, Archos or whatever,
Yes.
to perform particular services in particular communities.
That that's correct, Chair.
And and are the funds made available as the result of applications by Archos? Do you seek them out? How how does it, how does it work? And where does the funding come from? Is there some special fund within the NDIA uh that can be used for this purpose? Or is there some other mechanism for obtaining the money?
Yes, Chair. The funding for it comes out of the agency's operating budget uh rather than scheme costs. Um, so that it actually comes out of my my division's budget. So we allocate that funding. It's a bit of a common, going to the other question about how we do it, it's a bit of a combination. Sometimes we get approaches from communities who say, we've heard of this, or or some communities might have point five of funded Remote Community Connector, and I think they would like to expand that. Um, and other times we might hear um from local stakeholders or others that says, we need a a local person here. We need someone in the Torres Strait, or we need someone in Weipa, or we need someone in Fitzroy Valley. Uh, and then we'll work with the local community. It's usually the Aboriginal Medical Service or the Archos that will go to first off and work with them about their ability to take on those contracts.
We've heard a lot this week about the importance of flexibility, and this, I take it, you would regard as a mechanism for ensuring that the scheme has a degree of flexibility in the way in which it provides services, supports communities and interacts with those communities.
Yeah, mo- most definitely, Chair. Um, a lot's come up this week about different language groups. Um, for argument's sake, our Remote Community Connectors out in uh Galawinku in East Dunhamland um have done all their products in Yolongu language. Um, and their their videos and and those sorts of products. Um, we, there's no use us doing that from national office. We need to invest locally uh in communities to do those things.
Yes, thank you.
Mr McNorton, how many Community Connectors are there nationally?
It's two hundred and nine Remote Community Connectors, and they service just over three hundred remote communities.
And when you say remote, does that include very remote?
Yes, or remote and very remote. It it does.
If they service three hundred remote communities, are there any communities that don't have a connector?
Yes, there would be. Uh, there would be um some who aren't covered.
What percentage of remote or very remote First Nations communities would not have a remote connector?
I'll have to take that on notice, give you an accurate answer, counsel.
I think you indicated that it usually involves Archos or Akos.
Yes, or or Aboriginal Medical Services.
Yes, yeah. Is there a policy within the NDIA that it has to go to the category of organisations?
No, there's not a policy. It's more a practice that we like it to go to those organisations.
And why do you have that practice?
I I think um really is, as you know, what Pat Turner I I think really is, as you know, what Pat Turner just said about the trusted local organisation who are in community. Who have a presence, who who employ local people, obviously, sorry, who who often speak the local language. And it just makes a lot of sense for us to engage with that network for the delivery of that support.
If a community doesn't have the benefit of such organisations. What, if anything, does the NDA do to try and build? Such organisations so that in the future they can get the benefit of this programme?
Yeah, it's a it's a very good question, we we often work where there is a. A remote community not too far from the other very remote community, we might ask them to start servicing. Those communities, we might extend their grant and ask them if they can go out there and do some visiting for those communities. There's sometimes often a natural tendency where people in communities who don't have access to an arch or an AMS might connect with someone who does. And then we try and engage with those communities to reach into those more more remote, very remote communities.
How long has this programme been running?
We we started as a very early pilot in two thousand and seventeen, just to test it. And and it built up really quickly and to where it is today.
How many communities in two thousand and seventeen had no such organisation, but in two thousand and twenty two do have an eligible organisation?
Can I can I answer that by saying I think we started with two communities and now we're at three hundred and nine communities? Does that answer the question? So we we.
No, it's it's a useful answer, but it's not an answer to what I was trying to get at. Presumably in two thousand and seventeen, a number of communities had organisations in place already, which turned out to be quite eligible. I'm wondering, due to your programme, whether you've facilitated the creation of organisations in communities that didn't previously have them. That are now eligible for this programme.
Moreover, they are all existing organisations who've been, or expand their workforce. Into into delivering the connector model, some also evidence access and coordination of planning and also remote early childhood. So it's been an expansion of their existing services they provide in a community.
For all intents and purposes, that's a very positive development. But how in the communities that doesn't don't have such organisations can you build capacity so that they can reach that point?
This is the work we continue to do with our own community engagement staff, working with. Aboriginal controlled organisations who might service those communities to see if they can do some local recruitment. We we have tried, sometimes it doesn't always work that we we engage someone and that role isn't. Something that they're interested in doing, so they might opt out of it. But it is something we we're often looking at the map, council saying, where aren't we? Where do we need to go? How many participants are there? What can we do about that?
How long has your engagement unit been working on that particular project we've just been discussing of trying to build capacity?
Yeah, probably in the last two years when we really re-sourced up, resourced up our connector branch. And and they started having a look based on the success of the model in the Kimberley and East Dunham. That we really started investing heavily in that more community development, more community design of of remote community connectors across the country.
Mr. McNorton, that is to be applauded, but can you point to any successes where a community has gone from not having an eligible organisation, to use my words. To the position today where they do.
I think I'm getting confused with your term of a not eligible organisation.
When I use that term, it's on the basis that there's a preference or a policy within the NDA. To use those types of organisations, so I'm not meaning it as a precise term.
Yeah, so we we don't see any organisation would be ineligible to to do that. So the the Remote Community Connector in Fitzroy Valley is Mara Wara Wara. And they're they're not, as I understand it, an Acho, but they're an Aboriginal controlled organisation who does other things, that the CDP programme and and so forth. So we've been engaging with them to be able to deliver remote community connector. And and they've now got two point four remote community connectors that they're engaging. So they're probably, that's probably an example of one who wasn't a traditional Acho in a sense, but was still an Aboriginal controlled organisation locally.
Can I now move to a slightly related area? If the Productivity Commission reached certain conclusions in its two thousand and eleven report. Then the NDIS is established and rolled out. And then in two thousand and nineteen, the ministers have the meeting, which we've been discussing. Can I take it that when the NDIS was created and rolled out? The NDA was aware at that point of what the Productivity Commission had identified? And then my question is, between two thousand and fifteen with the rollout and two thousand and nineteen, when the ministers made certain decisions. What did the NDA do to address the issues which had been identified by the Productivity Commission in these communities?
In relation to the thin market?
In relation to the three matters I identified earlier when I referred to the commission, I'm happy to.
No, no, that's okay. I I guess going back to the Productivity Commission, which helped inform the the creation of the NDIS. Which then led to the drafting of the and the approval of the NDIS Act. And, you know, so the NDIS clearly sets out how we need to administer the scheme and and fund the scheme and and roll out the scheme. Through that period, there was a series of bilateral agreements with state and territories about the rollout. Place-based, age-based, timing of other periods. WA has just finished their full rollout based on their bilateral, so there was a period of. Getting the scheme's basic fundamentals in place. And I think throughout that time, there have been some aspects of trying to learn. Around in two thousand and seventeen with remote community connectors and other options. We've seen attempts of pooling funds in some communities done throughout the course of of the journey. And from two thousand and nineteen, where it was becoming quite evident where. Some participants were getting their plans and not able to access services, what the other things we needed to do. Hence the market intervention work that's that's now in place, so. It has been a journey along the way in terms of administering the scheme and rolling it out to where it is today. You know, five hundred and twenty thousand participants, I think it's the latest figure. So I think, counsel, what we've learnt is better understanding the data, where there are gaps in utilisation of people's plans by support type. And what are the options we can do to make sure those participants can access those supports? What are the different levers? As Kit's mentioned, we can use, whether that's pooling fund, commissioning those supports, looking in different ways.
Mr. McNorton, the commission acknowledges that the rollout of the NDIS was a massive exercise, it's self-evident.
Yeah.
What was any action taken in relation to thin markets as identified by the Productivity Commission? Prior to two thousand and nineteen, i.e. between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and nineteen, and if so, what was that action?
I'm I'm not sure if Kit wants to jump in here, but from my my understanding of what was done, it was moreover around. Trying to work on. The rollout into those remote communities to get people into the scheme, to get service support coordinators. Signing up to deliver services to try and get more providers registered to deliver supports. It was, as you you acknowledge, a very big transition where providers had to enter the the marketplace to deliver, sorry about the language, but that was the. The the approach, we had to get support coordinators, we had to get display support workers. Signed up as registered providers to deliver that, so a lot of effort went into the development of the provider market. As best we could at that period of time, but I think we've learnt that we do need to do things a lot differently in those markets.
I understand from part of your answer that there was a need to prioritise certain things. It does seem that if the organisation knew about thin markets when it was being rolled out. Why didn't it address that problem during the rollout?
Oh, well, I I, as I just answered, I think that the challenge was for us to make sure that, A, we were getting people access to the scheme. Getting them on their plans and getting their supports, their plans in place. And then trying to work through different models of getting more support workers and support providers in there. We didn't start probably doing different market commissioning until twenty eight, twenty eighteen, nineteen. Because we were so focused on making sure people could get their plans, get their supports, get some early intervention supports that they needed. As well as some of the other activities that were going on.
Ms. Papalopoulos, are you able to add to the discussion we've just been having?
The only thing I'd add is to say that I'm aware that there was some risk management. Placed around certain remote communities, so. For example, in the APY lands, the South Australian Government was providing the majority, if not all. Disability services in the APY lands. And the South Australian Government did not transition their service out of the APY lands until. My branch had assisted to put new providers in place to take over the service delivery that used to be provided by the government. And so my assumption would be that that similar process of risk management would have been in place. Certainly where other state or territory government services needed to. Needed to move out but be replaced by alternatives.
When you refer to risk management in that context, what do you mean?
I I mean managing the risk around people with disabilities not receiving the supports that they require.
So in lay terms, going from a system perhaps run by the state. To ending up with nothing if it wasn't transitioned very carefully.
That's correct.
It's an appropriate term.
I think so, thank you. Shall we resume at ten or earlier?
I know how long my questions will take, I'm not sure how long the answers will take. But based on what's transpired today and the very responsive and cooperative approach into witnesses, I'd be confident we can finish. In accordance with the general, as you're aware of.
If we start at ten.
If we start at ten, yes.
In the expectation that your answers will be commendably brief tomorrow, we shall start at ten a.m. We'll adjourn until then.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.